Good evening everyone, I'm calling to order the special meeting of the Douglas County School District Board of Education on June thirteenth at 5:04 PM. We'll begin with roll call. Director Chantia Shore.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Holtzman.
Here.
Lung.
Yes.
Meek.
Here.
And Ray is here. Directors, we do have some issues that we need to discuss in executive session which is a closed session to receive legal advice on personnel matters pursuant to CRS 2464024F, including employment contracts, specifically the superintendent's contract. We also have a legal issue to seek legal counsel with General Counsel Mary Clemish pursuant to CRS 246402, sorry, 2464024B. During executive session, the board is not allowed to make any decisions on proposed policies or resolutions or resolutions. We do have a unanimous board here tonight, so a two-thirds vote is required for us to move into executive session. I would ask therefore a motion to adjourn our regular board meeting and move into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Holtzman, seconded by Graziano. Our executive session will include Superintendent Tucker in consultation with outside legal counsel Kristen Edgar from Kaplan and Ernest. And then approximately at 5:35, we will also invite General Counsel Mary Clemish. Any further discussion or questions? See none, let's vote. Chantia Shore.
Aye.
Graziano.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Holtzman.
Aye.
Lung.
Aye.
Meek.
Aye.
And Ray is an ayes. That is unanimous and we are now moving into executive session for the public's information. We should reconvene somewhere a little bit after six o'clock tonight.
Okay, I think we're good, got them.
Just to be sure, I'm also watching YouTube. I still don't see it unless somebody can confirm.
Generally, there's a 30 second delay.
Yeah.
Yep, I think we're good, got them.
All right, back today.
We're going to try this again. We're reconvening from executive session into our regular session at approximately 6:19 PM. And next on our agenda is to accept the agenda. Is there a motion to accept?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion made by Chancho Shore, seconded by Director Graziano. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Chancho Shore.
Aye.
Graziano.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Holtzman.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Meek.
Aye.
Ray, aye. So the acceptance of the agenda passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is to receive an update regarding the implementation of the recently approved 2021 budget. I want to take an opportunity to welcome our new Chief Financial Officer, Kate Cataska, to our cabinet and to our team. We're very much looking forward to her. We're very much looking forward to her and also want to send many accolades to our interim CFOs. Janice Leisner, as well as Colleen Doan, who did a bang up job to get us to this point. But we want to welcome Kate and we're looking forward to the presentation tonight to understand where we are, what our current status is. Before we do that, Dr. Tucker, do you have any opening remarks before we have Kate begin the presentation?
As I said earlier, we're excited for Kate to join us. The accolades that you and other directors poured upon our interim CFOs are right on the money. And we're excited about a new chapter in our district relative to the finance side of the house. And Kate has a long reputation of being a team player, being an advocate for public education. And we're ready to hear her inaugural twenty 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 one budget update overview. Thanks.
Dr. Tucker, just for future reference, your video is muted right now. I don't know if that's intentional or if that's.
No, it's not intentional. We're having a few difficulties, but Mr. Sethi is on it. He'll, he'll get it unmuted. I do apologize.
No problem. Ms. Kataska, it's all yours.
Good evening, and so thank you so much for the warm welcome. First and foremost, I just want to thank you all for that welcome. Over the past couple of weeks, I think I'm on day nine now. Just that outpouring of support and welcoming to the district has, has really been incredible. I would also be remiss if I didn't also echo your sentiments about Ms. Leisner and Ms. Doan, who have kept this district and our team in such capable hands during that interim time period. So also, I'm very much appreciate your time this evening to give you an update on the implementation of the 2021 budget as adopted during the June twenty third board meeting. Excited to finally be here in person and not just watching as a fly on the wall through the YouTube channel. So tonight we will talk through this board's resolution regarding exploration of differentiated furlough days. Jana will be presenting the utilization of cares and other relief funding, as well as some discussion around additional funding being accessed by our charter schools. And then I will close this out with some additional information around the weighted student funding approach to reducing our site based budgets. All right, so hopping into the furlough day discussion, the board's resolution on June twenty third. And it looks like, sorry, I'm just checking slides here, Jen, if you want to go to slide four. Thank you so much. This board's resolution on June twenty third requested some further investigation regarding the feasibility of differentiating furlough days for employees at that lower end of our pay ranges. We analyzed staff and pay ranges first below twenty five thousand and then in the tier of twenty five to thirty five thousand.
For just a minute, I'm gonna, just one more time confirm, we're hearing that there's video but no sound on our YouTube channel. So got him or indoor Chris Shalane, can you confirm that we also have sound?
Hang on one second. Hey, Chris, are you looking at that?
We're getting.
It's Stacy. I have sound when I'm listening and since you guys have come back on.
Okay, very good. So, um, sounds good. So Ms. Kataska, I apologize for the interruption. If you will start from the beginning of your slide for us. Thank you.
Um, just as this slide director, right? Or do you want me to go all the way back to the beginning? Now I lost your audio, but I'm gonna assume.
Yeah, start with this one. That's fine.
Absolutely. Um, so the board passed resolution on June thirtieth, twenty twenty third, my apologies. Along with the adopted budget requesting some further investigation regarding the feasibility of differentiating furlough days for our employees that are at that lower end of our pay ranges. We analyze staff and pay ranges first below twenty five thousand and then also between twenty five and thirty five thousand dollars annually. Two thousand one hundred and thirty five regular employees fall within one of those two ranges. The cost to reinstate one furlough day across both of those ranges is approximately two hundred and ninety two thousand. Whereas resolution of two of those furlough days obviously doubles that to about five hundred and eighty four thousand. Um, also important to note that within this group of employees, it's likely that they, they would possibly have the ability to either work additional hours or potentially earn overtime, some of which could be eligible for CARES Act funding, which would alleviate our impact on the general fund. While, you know, those ranges of total dollar impact might seem like a drop in the bucket in the grand scheme of things, given the, the size of our general fund, really any decision to restore those furlough days is going to come at the expense of district reserves at this point in the year. And from a financial standpoint, I would have concerns about tapping into any of those reserves, just given, you know, one uncertainty around potential for media recisions and our sort of protection of those reserves to be able to absorb anything that would occur mid-year without further impacting our operational budgets. And then potentially, you know, two, we also don't know where our October count numbers might come in in terms of total enrollment as compared to our projections on which our twenty twenty one budget was built. Uh, and then sort of lastly, we're also always continuing to explore the possibility of utilizing that relief fund related to COVID specific professional development as a mechanism to potentially bring back some of that pay in the form of PD time is about rather than, you know, base, base salary adjustments. I'm also want to point out, I recognize there have been a lot of questions in recent days about our implementation of these furlough days in terms of, you know, adjustments within workday, our, our financial and payroll system. And I'm happy to address those at the end of this presentation. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jana, uh, who's going to talk through how some of our relief funding has been utilized, as well as some of the additional funding streams that our charter schools are seeking.
Good evening, directors. This is Janice Leisner, Director of Finance. So touching base on these cares, these cares dollars one more time. This slide again shows us the three different buckets of CARES funding that we have available to us. This is an exact duplication of what we've showed you several times in the past, but it's really important to understand the different buckets and what they mean. So the SR funds is our smallest bucket of money. That was allocated based on Title One formula, and that's about one point three million. We have guidance that this has to be shared with both non-public and charter schools within our boundaries. This is a small amount for us, but for our neighboring districts, this is a really big bucket. So we're going to talk more about what those allocations look like and some of the questions that are still out there around it. But it has different meaning for us and it does for Jeffco, Denver Aurora. Then there's the coronavirus relief fund. This is our big pot of money of twenty seven million, of which seven million was passed through to the charter schools on a per pupil basis as the guidance told us had to be done. This one's tricky because this money was not meant for education. Governor Polis, who, as you all know, is very fond of education and wants to push as much funding towards education as he can, pushed this money to K twelve education, but the guidance was not built for education. So we just received what they called final guidance on these allowable costs on July first. But this is still changing and there's still adjustments being made. And I was on phone calls with CD this morning. And from last week to this week, changes are being made and it's only Monday. So we expect to, if, it feels like we've had this money for a long time and we haven't been doing something with it. But this guidance is really tricky and it's changing all the time. Then there's the governor's fund, which we don't quite know what this is going to look like yet, but it's going to come in the font, in the form of competitive grants that we will look to see if we should apply for those or not. They probably won't be as much for us as some of the other districts, but we'll keep an eye on those and that guidance will be coming out in August or September. All right, talking a little bit more about those SR funds. So again, these were allocated based on Title One allocations, but they are not subject to those Title One requirements. We are told that these funds have to be shared with both charter schools and private schools within our boundaries, but there's still a ton of debate on whether those funds should then be distributed out to the others based on Title One or based on per pupil. So the Title One is where it gets tricky. There's been districts that suggest that, hey, we would like to distribute those funds based on Title One, but then use it for our entire district and our entire neighboring schools. That was told, no, absolutely, you can't do that based on current guidance. We're still watching to see how that will go through the system and what final guidance will come. And we'll talk more about that in a minute, but if we, if we allocate based on Title One, we only have four schools that are Title One eligible within our boundaries. That's Southridge, Sedalia, Hope Middle School and Hope High School. So unlike the CRF funds, the coronavirus relief funds, which is our big pot of money, these are reimbursement, not in advance. So the way this works is we would consult with those private schools and charter schools to determine their needs. And then we would procure it for them and they would ask for reimbursement. So that may discourage some of these schools from accessing these funds, which would just put that back into the district pot of money. The good thing about this money is that there's a much longer spend period than the CRF funds. So these last until September twenty twenty two. And so this allows us to have different options around the big bucket of CRF funds that we would like to use for software licenses or salaries. That's only good for six months, so we would need to rely on these SR funds for that other six months or beyond. So if we distributed these SR funds based on a per pupil method, again, we would work with those private schools. It would be a maximum of about sixty two thousand that would be eligible maximum to go to these private schools and the amount decreases if they opt not to participate. The charter schools would be a maximum of about three hundred and five thousand. And that would leave the district with around nine hundred and twelve thousand of SR funds. So again, while these are a longer use, it's a much, much smaller bucket that we're talking about. If we use the Title One method, this one is much harder. So I know a lot of our neighboring districts are really pushing for this, but again, their title funds look much different than Douglas County. So if we went to that Title One method of distributing out to both private schools and charter schools, there's a lot of work that would have to be done to look at those boundaries and the free and reduced that live within those boundaries of those schools. So there's a lot of work that would need to be done of how this allocation would be done. We're starting that work just in case, so we want to be ready to move however the decisions come down. But it would look much different for us. And if we were required to use it just on Title One schools, then that would keep us from using it for a lot of our staff or a lot of our software purchases. So it would really limit our ability, at least based on current guidance as we have it. The CRF fund, so this is the coronavirus relief fund, our big bucket of money, twenty seven million dollars that we got on five twenty. Seven million of that was given to our charter schools. So again, we've had this money for a while, but the guidance is just starting to get solidified. So all these funds have to be spent by December twenty twenty. And that timeframe makes it really difficult for salaries and those yearly subscription costs. So most of the software subscription costs are year long. And it makes it very clear in the, the guidance that even if you pay for twelve months of online subscriptions at the beginning of the year, within those six months, it doesn't count. You have to just take six months of that subscription. So again, final guidance was somewhat received on July first, so that hasn't given us much time. We've definitely been working on this. And it's almost all I'm doing right now with our grants coordinator is figuring out where these funds can be spent and costing out different options of where we want it to go. And we have started a committee that is brand new. Tuesday tomorrow, we are meeting with this committee and they're going to help us go through all these different requests that we know are going to start coming in the door very quickly. So a lot of these meetings that you guys have listened to and that have been happening throughout the district have been around, well, we'll use cares money for that. So this committee is going to vet those requests and make sure that it's a good use of the money based on guidance, that it's the strategic right move to make to spend the money in that manner, all those decisions. So there's representatives from finance, IT, facilities, education. So we're trying to get all of those areas covered through that decision making process. And then the entire cabinet will be updated on those decisions periodically. This is a very high level summary of where we are right now. So again, we've got that twenty seven million in the door. We pass through about seven million to the charter schools, leaving us around twenty million. These are the buckets that we have solidly decided this is a good use of money. So technology was a distributing of the Chromebooks, the monitors to all the kids that were on remote during the closure. Personnel are things like the hazard pay and people who have already used sick leave due to COVID nineteen specifically. Communication is translation of some of that material that we've distributed during the closure. Educational materials is the online learning like Canvas. Facilities are those masks, disinfectant gloves, all of those things within the buildings. Oh, I'm sorry, facilities of the Plexiglas and health and safety is the, the gloves and the, the disinfectant. So, um, my opinion as we look towards spending these funds is to really focus on what's going to make our parents, our kids, our staff comfortable going back into that school environment. And so it will be a committee decision, but we have a lot of money to use here. And we want to make sure that we're starting to work with our schools as they're looking to talk to their parents about what's going to be needed to bring their kids back into the buildings. We'll see if we can help with some of that using these cares funds. So a few things that we're looking at that will be the big dollars that we, we have to look at some of these big dollar items to utilize this twenty million dollars within the short timeframe. So one of those that, that Kate talked about was the future professional development days. It has to be definitely related to COVID nineteen type items. This can be optional. If we decide to go that way, there's still discussions being had with this. It can be scheduled on those furlough days, which it probably will need to be, just with the tight calendar that we have this year. Paid via stipend to those who attend. So we have very clear information of who took this training so we can be in compliance with that grant of providing that material. And we think this is mostly educators and some school administrators that will benefit from this COVID, but I, I think there's bigger discussions happening of if we can expand that out even further. The other big thing is the grant allows us to charge salaries on increased instructional hours. So if we had an average of three instructional hours per day during the closure, so in the spring of twenty twenty and in the fall, we're going to have six hours. That difference can be charged to the grant. So this is where we're going to be able to utilize a lot of this money. Now, the thing that changed just today was that they were saying last week that it had to be remote hours to remote hours. So three hours of remote in the spring and six hours of remote in the fall kept it COVID related. They have now opened that up to say it could be three hours of remote learning in the spring, but six hours of both remote and in person in the fall and it will qualify. So that's really great news for us and helps us free up some general fund dollars to use in better ways going forward or to help us if we have a recession or something else that happens next year. Other things being talked about are nutrition services, equipment for their new business model, because we don't know how we're going to have to deliver food or serve lunch to kids. Staff needed for remote learning. So this is a tricky one, though, that we have to make sure that we're in compliance with the grant and that there's strings attached. So what they say is that at least fifty one percent of their time has to be spent on coronavirus activities in each pay period. So we have to look at each pay period and make sure that fifty one percent of their activities are really COVID related, which might mean just remote learning and nothing else. So we just have to be careful with that one. And there is still so much work to be done on this to, to know where we're going to end. I think that's, oh, okay, charter schools. So there was questions around charter schools and what funding they could access. Charter schools did access the paycheck protection program, which a lot of you have been hearing about on the news. They were able to apply through their banks to the SBA process and districts are district run charter or district neighborhood. And districts are district-run charter or district neighborhood schools are not eligible for this program. So to date, eight charter schools have applied and received funding in different ranges. The application process was before we knew of the CRF funds or the SIR funds. So these, the timing of these are very different and the use of these funds are very different. So the Payroll Protection Act is very focused on payroll and staff and keeping people employed. The SIR and CRF funds are not that for education. It's getting closer to that as the guidance adjusts day by day, but they they are meant to cover very different things. So the SBA has not published that final forgiveness application process and what that's going to look like. And that may change what charter schools decide to do with this money and some may actually return this money. We don't know. This information, some of it was received from the NINE News story that they published everybody who applied for those payroll protection loans. So that's the ranges, so that's that one to two million. That's the range that was published with NINE News. We asked the charter schools specifically to get back to us in a really quick turnaround what they actually received. So that's when you see the received off to the side and some don't have that. Actually, they might all pretty much have that now. This was updated even as of today because we kept getting information from them. So they did report to us what they actually received. Again, we don't have final guidance on what they're going to do with these funds or if they'll actually expend them or return them. Kate?
Alrighty. So I'm going to jump into some detail on the methodology to reduce our site-based budgets. And this is one where I absolutely hope if Ms. Stone is watching that I I do her proud. I know this is one of her babies. So diving in a little bit, so the board had requested some additional detail just about how how in the logic and the methodology to actually reduce those budgets. In total, site-based budgets were reduced by three point five million or about eleven percent of the total thirty point four million dollar reduction to the DCSD budget. And rather than instituting a flat per pupil dollar reduction across all schools, we implemented that reduction using a tiered or a weighted approach. The goal here is that schools serving a higher percentage of students with at-risk indicators would receive a lower per pupil reduction than a school with a lower percentage of those indicators. So in determining need, we looked at five different indicators. Students qualifying for free and reduced-price lunch, students on an IEP, students with 504 plans, gifted and talented learners, as well as English language learners. So I'm going to jump into the next slide to try to detail some of this out about how that calculation actually worked. So we started with a baseline reduction of seventy-five dollars per pupil across for each of those indicators and then adjusted up or down based on the percentage within each indicator that that school holds. So for example, looking at that first indicator of free and reduced-price lunch, if a school has forty percent FRL, we would adjust the starting baseline down from seventy-five dollars at a margin of fifty percent, so bringing that down to thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Whereas another school might have a free reduced-price lunch percentage of thirty percent, again, starting with that seventy-five dollars as our baseline and multiplying that by seventy-five percent rather than fifty, bringing their per pupil reduction to fifty-six twenty-five for that particular indicator. So if we jump to the next slide, we can see the different tiers. And I apologize, I know this is a bit of an eye chart for those of you that don't have it printed out in front of you and maybe looking online. But that top table is the different ranges in tiers for each of those indicators. And then the adjustment to that seventy-five dollars based on where each individual school falls for their particular demographic. So first step is multiplying out that seventy-five dollars and coming up with a per student rate for each of those indicators. Once we have that, we jump into that bottom table and I apologize again, another bit of an eye chart there. We look to create a weighted average across all five of our indicators to come up with a total per pupil reduction for each individual school. So if we look in that bottom table, each of those indicators carries its own weight, free reduced-price lunch being the largest percentage of that total bucket. And multiplying that out, we can carry that math through. So using that methodology, the weighted average per pupil cut, and I realize that's a mouthful, ranges from about fifty-eight, sixty-nine to eighty-four, seventy-five across all of our schools. So then we take that per people amount and apply it to total enrollment for each school to come up with their total dollar reduction in terms of their SVB. Also included in the slide, assuming you have the electronic version, is a link on that bottom bullet, which will give you the reduction amounts for for each and every school. So I hope that helped to clarify some of those methodology and calculations used to reduce those site-based budgets. With that, I'm going to open it up to any questions regarding either this slide, slides that Jana presented, or jumping back into our furlough discussion at the beginning of this presentation.
You can ask Mrs. Schlesner as well. So board, we have, there's four main topics that have been discussed tonight. Furlough days, stimulus funds, charter school use of PPP and the weighted student formula. So I'm going to go through each of those topics separately and just ask board directors if you have questions. We'll start out with furlough days. Any questions regarding the furlough day topic? Director Meek and then Director Holtzman.
Ms. Cataska, thank you so much. I have received a lot of questions on the way the furlough days have been calculated, why base pay was reduced versus just taking away the day during that paycheck. And I would like to understand the implications and the reasoning behind the way it was done.
Absolutely. So in looking at the implementation of furlough days, we explored several different options. In talking to our neighboring districts, there certainly isn't a one-size-fits-all approach to building those into compensation. So our first option is actually to adjust pay in the period that the furlough day is realized. So if we decide that December 1st is one of our furlough days that we will be implementing, the December payroll would be impacted by that daily rate of hours not worked for that employee. If more than one furlough day is realized in a single pay period, then multiple days of pay would be docked again within that particular pay period. A second and third option, which are sort of pretty similar, the second option being that we can adjust the work year. And what that does is actually takes that impact of furlough day and spreads it out across all months of the contract year. And then similarly, similarly, adjusting an employee's base pay sort of has that same effect whereby reducing base salary by the amount of that furlough day spreads the impact of that furlough day out across all twelve pay periods. So while mechanically options two and three are really pretty similar, the the approach and the impact to the employee is much different. Because either I am taking the full brunt of that pay reduction in one month's salary or two months potentially, depending on the employee group, or I'm able to alleviate that stress and spread it across all twelve months of my payroll. So additionally, as we looked at user different options and different ways to do this, it's also important to note that while there are different mechanics and in ways to adjust for this furlough time, the impact to para-eligible compensation is not impacted. So para benefits are calculated based on eligible earnings worked, not necessarily a stated base compensation. So that was another factor that played into that was to make sure that we were, you know, keeping employees whole from from that perspective. And when the when the topic of furlough days even first came about, you know, our directors were hearing from from their leaders and principals were hearing from their staff, just, you know, real serious concerns about the impact to livelihoods of absorbing a full day of pay reduction or multiple days of pay reduction within that given month. So when we sort of weighed all of those options and again, not having that one-size-fits-all approach, really felt that it was least impactful to staff to be able to minimize the impact in each month's paycheck.
Good, thank you. Director Holtzman?
Thank you. I just basically had that same question and I'm trying to decide right now if I have a follow-up. So I guess just to reiterate, because I know some of the concerns that I have received is that by reducing base pay, by using that method of calculation, that this would have an impact on the calculation of the para-retirement the rest of their life. And that that base pay with, this is an additional issue, would also be the baseline now if any future increases in compensation were to be given. I guess if you could just reply for me one more time about the impact on para. I think I understood, but I know there's others who are listening to you. And and then and then the impact if we were to hopefully be able to give compensation increases at some time.
Yep, absolutely. So again, to restate, para-eligible benefits are going to be based on eligible earnings worked and paid, not necessarily a stated compensation level either in our, you know, finance or payroll system or any contract language that we might have. And so, for example, if an employer retires midway through the year, their earnings within that contract year are significantly less than their stated base salary would otherwise indicate. So it's important as we think about that, that those benefits are based on payments to employees, not just a stated base salary within a particular contract year. Another example would be if an employee changes jobs. So stated base pay, you know, changes throughout that year based on positions that I've taken. And the para-eligible benefits are going to be based on what I've actually earned in my paycheck at the end of that contract year and based on that highest average salary across those three years. So in response to the base salary being sort of that that baseline for any future increases, our priority first and foremost is going to be to restore furlough days. And so we will be doing that prior to, you know, addressing any unfreezing of salary or or future pay increases down the line. Our first priority is going to be making people's paychecks whole and reinstating those furlough days as as quickly as we possibly can.
Very good. Other questions about the furlough days? Other board directors? If you'll motion to me. So Ms. Cataska, you're recommending against the option of reducing furlough days based on compensation. I heard one because of the concern of deleting from reserves is was the major concern. Were there other reasons why you would advise against us looking at our lower compensated employees differently in terms of not charging them furlough days?
So it's a couple of things there. You know, one is certainly that impact to reserves. And given that we are just thirteen days into the fiscal year with a whole lot of planning work to do about what return to school looks like and what the impact might be there, I'm hesitant to, you know, tap into it so early in the year. As I said, additionally, I think this this employee group has the ability to potentially work additional hours. Some of these are part-time staff that may be able to add hours to their own workday or work calendar in that way or be eligible for overtime and potentially even be able to have that funded through through some of that relief funding. The other piece of it, too, is I think we're just really early on. And, you know, as we're looking to potentially restore some of those furlough days through professional development days, I would hesitate to make that decision without first fully calendaring when those furlough days might occur and then also evaluating whether that relief funding or future professional development days could be that backstop that we're looking for.
Very good, thank you. Okay, directors, any other questions around furlough days? All right, seen none, let's move on to the stimulus funds, the CARES, the SIR, the Corona Relief Fund. Any questions regarding that, those slides? Director Chacho Shore and then Director Meek.
Can any of the stimulus funds be used for staff development or stipends?
Yes, some. So the professional development has to be specific to COVID. There is there is some extra pay that can also be. So if it's, we did some hazard pay when we first closed, that hazard pay was eligible. Some stipends are eligible. Everything just has to be very specific to COVID response. So the stipends and the extra pay is actually a little bit easier to cover under the CARES Act than to try to move someone's set base salary under COVID. That comes with a few more strings attached that we just have to be more careful with. So the short answer is yes.
And what about hiring not-permanent or non-permanent employees for the opening of school additional support?
Yes, that can also be done. Again, it has to be an unbudgeted position. It has to be COVID-related for new staff. If we move existing staff into some of those duties, then the substantial substantially dedicated to COVID response kind of comes into play of fifty-one percent of their job has to be substantially dedicated to COVID response within that pay period. So it's easier to hire in people to help with some of that response. But again, our big pot of money is only good for six months. And then we have to look to that much smaller pot of money, which is probably a million or less to cover us for the rest of the year or into future years. So we just have to be careful with the use of that SIR fund and make sure that we're using it the best that we can or we hire people for six months, which might be a harder ticket to sell.
Any other questions regarding, I'm sorry, Director Meek?
Jana, you know, my question's really around the SIR. Well, first question is around the SIR funds. It's only one point three million dollars. That is, the way I understand it, the U.S. Department of Ed ruled, I think it was July 1, that, you know, there's two ways you can use it. Either one, you're going to share it across public schools, private schools, or you do the Title I allocation. You know, given that we know the COVID-19 slide is really hurting our most at-risk students and they're the ones that need resources the most, have we really seriously considered perhaps allocating that one point three million dollars to our Title I schools? It's one point three million dollars. We have other schools in our district that received one to two million dollars for just one school, right, to help them through federal stimulus dollars. And it seems like the use of those dollars to serve our kids who are most vulnerable would be something we would think seriously about doing.
So that is an option. I think we're trying to look at everything, big picture. So we have this twenty million dollar pot also that definitely we're looking at those at-risk kids with that funding also. So we'll bring that group together on Tuesday. And Nancy Ingles is definitely part of that conversation. Will help us to keep in mind those at-risk and special education students specifically. And we'll make sure that we focus on those. I definitely not opposed to using that Title I formula for distributing those funds out. I'm curious to see where some of this potential litigation in some other states comes about because I don't want to decide to allocate out these funds based on Title I and then have litigation come about because of that, this brought from the private schools or charter schools that did not have access to those funds. And then we're spending some of this fund for litigation around that. So I just want to be careful about the decisions that we make and that guidance is getting more and more clear every day.
Yeah, I think the U.S. Department of Ed has has issued some more clear guidance on that. And I would appreciate us taking a look at that. We have all these different buckets of stimulus dollars, right? So then we have the Corona Relief Funds. When we look at those, you know, it's about four hundred dollars a student. When you look at the Paycheck Protection Program and the schools that received it, they're receiving about a thousand to thirteen hundred dollars a student. And, you know, we have equitable distribution of resources is one of our themes in our strategic plan. And it's something our community has come together, you know, to say that they believe in. So I don't know if we have gone back to any of the schools that received the Paycheck Protection Program, PPP program, to have conversations with them about that. I know some other districts, schools, charters that received that funding. Chose not to take the Corona Relief Funding. And I don't know if we have talked about trying to look at all of our schools. And trying to figure out how to allocate the various pots of money. So that we are serving all students as best as we can in an equitable manner.
So that's a nice segue into our next topic, which is to talk about the the chart. Before we do that, I see Director Holsman's hand for a final question on this topic, then we'll move into the PPP program.
And I I have to say, I do have a question on the stimulus funds, but I know I saw Director Lung's hands before mine, so I'm hoping we can have two final questions.
You got it. No, Director Lung is on my, I'm sorry, Director Lung, I will get to you as well, promise.
So my question is about. Since the Department of Education has asked us to distribute some of these funds to non public schools. We as a board have responsibility in regards to sending these public dollars to non public schools. For instance, we have obligations, fiduciary obligations to our taxpayers. In regards to transparency and, you know, how we spend those dollars. So when we distribute those, does that then give our board an obligation? And will these non public schools be subject to all the same federal mandates as our public schools?
Yeah, that's a great question. The way it works is it's just the Esser funds that have to be shared with those non public schools. And that is a reimbursement grant, not the money that we receive ahead of time like the CRF funds. So the way the process will work is they, we will consult with both the charter schools and those private schools. And talk to them about what their needs are. Then an application process ensues and we submit that application to CDE. But we already know the allocation that we're allowed, so it's a pretty easy application process. And then we will procure those needs for them. So it's really a forward looking grant for them. It's really hard to go backwards on that. We remain the fiscal agent, we would procure those items and then pass it to them. So we remain in control of those funds, ensuring that there's compliance. So even if they opt into that grant, we don't just pass the money to them.
Okay, Director Lung, go ahead and then Director Holsman will come back to you.
Right, I am looking at the CRF spend so far. And you have seven hundred and ten thousand spent on health and safety. And the labor school is allocated to around twenty million dollars. I, when we opened the school, I had a concern about the killers of of the school. And whether we can supply enough face masks for the student or the staff. And how many times we're going to clean the school and and so forth. So that's the CRF fund. You're gonna use it a lot for that purpose because when I look at the slide, they spend still to come. It does not indicate anything that you can spend on on that area. So I I just want to make sure that. That money can be used to spend on face masks. Or cleaning supply or hiring a crew to clean the building and so forth. Can you clarify that? Because I have not seen that in the in the slide.
Yes, I'm sorry, I could have added that to that slide also. So I think that's one of the top priorities of what we should be using this money for. Is to make sure that students, staff, everyone's as protected as possible. And feels as safe as they can reentering our schools in as much of an in person, full time basis as possible. And we'll be working really close with the task force that you'll hear about next. And our school leaders to ensure that we're using this CARES money. In the best way possible to get those funds transferred out to those schools and get everything as clean and protected as possible.
Thank you, because I mean, I don't, I know it's too late to add it back because I think there's a lot of people's mind is. We're going to get the money to do this while we are cutting budgets and I'm so glad the CRF fund can be used. And I think it put a lot of people's mind at ease that we do have additional money for that purpose. To guarantee your kid and our staff, you know, in a healthy environment. Thank you.
All right, Director Holsman, final question on this topic.
Sure, just a follow up on the question I asked earlier about distribution to non public schools. And I appreciate that information that that we will actually be basically taking the requests and then purchasing the items and being in charge of that. And and I think that's somewhat helpful for accountability purposes for our taxpayers. Just though made me think that when we perform services like that for, say, for instance, our charter board governed schools. Those charter schools pay for those services. They pay for our administrative costs for our staff time in order to do things like that. And so in the interest of equity, and and I certainly wouldn't know if this is legally allowed. But in the interest of equity, I hope that we could look into doing something similar. When we distribute funds to our non public schools. So if you could just look into that, that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. We're gonna move into the next topic, which was charter schools' use of the payroll relief funds. And I want to capture Director Meek had a question and. Ms. Leistner, do you need that repeated regarding that particular topic from Ms. from Director Meek? Or do you remember what she was asking to give her a response?
I think it was just around if if we want to consult with those charter schools to see if. They still want to use those CRF funds or if they just want to use the payroll protection. Funds, is that correct, Director Meek?
Yeah, I think it was entering negotiations just to talk about the the equitable distribution of resources. And whether they really are interested in the CRF funds. There are charter schools that did not get the PPP funds. There's, there's money that could be redistributed to both charter schools and neighborhood schools. To help make stimulus dollars that are coming in be more equitable across the district.
Yeah, we'll have conversations with Dr. Tucker Tucker in the cabinet about that and we'll we'll have the discussions. Thank you.
Certainly heard what you said earlier, Ms. Leistner, is that money has already been passed on to the charter. So to collect those dollars back even through a negotiation process might be somewhat challenging.
Yeah, so there there will be some work that has to be done regardless around this. So even though the funds are passed to them in accordance with the guidance. They have to spend that by the end of December. So we have monthly check in scheduled with them to see how they're utilizing those funds. And if they're not utilizing those funds, those sweep back into the district and we can redistribute how we see fit. Within the district or to charter schools or however that looks and whoever Dr. Tucker helps us decide to do that. So there are opportunities to check in and see what they're using and how they're using these funds.
Directors, any other questions regarding charter school and the PPP funds? Director Lung, go ahead.
Well, I just want to mention that the PPP is a loan for federal governments. You get a one percent interest rate. The government has not published a guideline. How you can call forgive, you know, the money. So I I I think we just need to make sure that we are very sure of that. Those are not guaranteed that you don't have to return those money. But I do have a, I do have a questions on this is the least that we saw. On the slide, it's only matching. The name of the entity that collect more than hundred fifty thousand and above. Those who collect less than hundred fifty thousand above, their name is not being published. So are we sure we only have eight charter school that get the PPP money? Have we asked? The rest of the charter school? Whether they get anything or we just assuming that since we saw those eight names, we automatically think that they are it.
We did ask the charter schools specifically and that actually tells me the reason why we got notified. That wouldn't charter school got money that was not on the list. So that answers the question for me. So yes, we did ask the question specifically of our charter schools. And ask them if there was anything else that they went out there and tried to utilize that we weren't aware of. And they, there wasn't anything that they notified us of. Thank you, me to Director Ray.
We're gonna move on to the last topic, which was weighted student funding. And Ms. Kataska presented that on behalf of Colleen Doan. Are there questions regarding that presentation? Any questions, directors? You throw your hands up. Well, Ms. Kataska, look at that, you gave a perfect presentation and there's, there's no question. So way to go. All right, so Ms. Leistner, Ms. Kataska, again, thank you for the update, directors. This is information only, but it's not requesting us to take action. But I would just quickly ask if there's any action that you would ask Dr. Tucker. Regarding what we've heard so far, is there anything that you would throw out there that you would need more information about or further action to be made? And I'm looking around, Director Holsman, go ahead.
If if it's okay, I'd like to let Director Chantel Shore go first. I think she's not in your easy view and she's been raising her hand for a while.
Director Chantel Shore, I am so sorry.
That's all right, Director Ray, I would have interrupted had you not seen me soon. I just was really wondering and I still have kind of a question about. The monies that go to private schools. And I thought I heard our language say that we were had to assure their compliance. Did I hear that correctly? Or how, how are we responsible for the monies that go to the private schools in our district?
Yeah, it's an awkward relationship for sure. So usually it's us and the charter schools and we remain that fiscal agent and we're in control of. Of those funds and they report to us all of that backup and support. It has to be similar with those private schools, which might be why some of these private schools might opt out in the long run. Because we have to remain in control of those funds per the guidance. And we will consult with them, we will complete the applications. And then we are told that we procure those items and pass it to them. So we do stay in control of that compliance and making sure that the expenditures are correct. With the guidelines and follow all of those federal and grant rules.
And so it's our responsibility to assure that private schools are following. The guidelines for the federal and state funds that they receive.
Correct.
Thank you. I wanted clarification about that and find that interesting.
All right, Director Holsman, final, final word on this presentation.
So I just wanted to reiterate my request that if you could please look into this, Dr. Tucker. Whether private schools that do decide to utilize these funds that we are. Responsible for. Watching over if they could be asked to pay for the administrative services that in our staff time that it takes to do that. If if that's a possibility and if that could be requested. And then my other request for the future would be if we could. If Dr. Tucker, if you could make a recommendation to the board for those charter schools that do end up utilizing. Their payroll protection funds. If we need to look at equity concerns in future budget proposals and how we might make sure. That that we are treating all of our schools equitably, including our non charter governed schools. So that would be my request and I guess if that needs board action, that that would also be my two motions if you'd like me to do that.
So Dr. Tucker, are you Carrie? Are you comfortable carrying those two, two suggestions forward and exploring those for us?
Yes, sir. Actually, we've had some preliminary conversations with Mr. Danny Windsor. Who soon will be our former director of chores. We've had some of those early conversations about that and we're more than capable of carrying it forward with our cabinet.
And Director Lung, I saw you waving vigorously down there. Go ahead.
I want to have follow ups on some of those care money, yes, yes. Your money and seems like a lot of those, we're going to get more detail this month or next month. So. I I think it's important to know how we can spend them and hopefully. The governments can button us the guideline so we can use the money to restore some of the furlough day. That would be something that I would like to follow up on the CRF money. And and also I would like to know how much CRF money we're going to allocate for cleaning purpose.
So Ms. Leistner, I think just if you'll keep us in the loop, I don't think it's worthy of necessarily a board agenda item. But I think Director Lung would like some follow up when you get more clarity as it changes day by day. And also just follow up as far as how that, those dollars are continuing to be spent. So we'll look forward to that and I, at that point, I'm going to go ahead and conclude this and thank again Ms. Kataska, Ms. Leistner. For your presentation and we'll look forward to continuing to have updates in future board meetings. So thank you. We want to move on to the next agenda item, which is to talk about the plan for the restart and recovery of our schools. Those of you may recall that on June twenty third at our board meeting, we approved a framework. That framework focused on contingency plans. And now we are going to hear from Dr. Tucker and his staff regarding the actual plan for what. The fall reentry would look like if we were to do that tomorrow. So this is what is best known with the current circumstances and current restrictions. So, Dr. Tucker, it's all yours.
Well said, President Ray and our directors, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to discuss. Our reentry and recovery plan. At this moment, right now, it means for pre K through twelve that we're in school all day, every day in person. This plan right now represents our best thinking at this moment. It also represents the heroic work of two thousand, nearly two thousand folks. Who put a lot of effort and time in applying to be a part of our task force. And also those folks who've given us a tremendous amount of feedback in terms of what school should look like. In the fall in the next coming week. So I certainly want to honor the work. Of these nearly two thousand folks who apply for the task force and and folks have given us feedback. As well as the two hundred, nearly two hundred people. Who actually sit on our mo- on our multiple task force. So this plan to reopen school in person is is really a tribute to them. But it's also a celebration as well. When you look at how much time, effort and thoughtfulness, our entire school community is really put in into this. Whether we're talking about our outstanding teachers, our administrators, support staff. Of course, our students, parents, community members and always our board members. So again, this is, this is a celebration. It's a celebration, albeit in a very difficult time, a very difficult time. And we know things will 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 change due to COVID. But there are a few factors that I want to talk about that certainly will not change. One, we'll continue to listen to our staff, students, parents, community members, and our plan will be flexible. Ms. Leistner mentioned, we've just got new guidance in terms of how we're going to use some of our COVID relief funds. Director Lung alluded to new guidance that's coming out on. Either at the end of this week or next week, we hope to get guidance, reopening guidance from the Colorado Department of Education. We are very fortunate tonight to have Dr. Douglas with us, who is the executive director. Of the Tri County Health Department. And we have our very own Lisa Cantor, who oversees multiple areas in PLS, including. Nursing and wellness and they're going to talk with us. And so I'm going to be very quick and I know. Dr. Douglas has been waiting on the line here for a while. But the second thing, we talk about this not going to change about our reentry plan is that. We're going to do everything in our power to implement protocols as they become known to us. Or best practices, new best practices become known to us. We're going to make sure we implement those protocols to keep our students, staff and our visitors who come to our our district who do happen to come by. We want to make sure that we keep them safe. We also want to focus on equity. I heard equity being talked tonight about by our board of directors. So that each student is receiving a quality education, whether they are participating in person or or e learning. That's the online component that we have in the event that we cannot start in person. And we'll be transparent, we'll continue to be transparent on our plan and how it's working, how it's not working, what we're learning, what we're learning from districts across the country. And we're going to make adjustments as needed. I will say lastly here, before we move on to Dr. Douglas, I want to remind, let folks know that in the coming days, we're going to begin to communicate efforts of our plan via various channels, whether it's during Facebook Live, emails, town halls, whatever we need to do to ensure our community, our staff, all and our students understand the importance here of this plan and they understand some of the things that we're being faced with. I want, again, as I said, spend a lot of time going through this plan here. But it's important in a director rate mentioned this that our 71-page framework that covers all of the contingencies, whether in person, e-learning, or a variation particularly at the secondary level for an A B accommodation in which students are coming to school and staff are coming to school two or three days a week. So we have all of that in place and that huge framework covers that. And tonight's conversation will be strictly about us returning to school in the fall with flexibility if things change. So at this time now, I want to go ahead and welcome Dr. Douglas and Lisa Cantor. We're going to get started with Lisa. She's going to talk about some mitigating factors along that we can use to mitigate COVID, the spread of COVID-19 in our district to keep our students, staff and folks healthy and safe. Mr. Sethi.
I can present or Lisa's available to speak?
Okay, we'll go ahead and let Lisa speak.
Good evening, directors. Tonight, we will be reviewing the health and safety guidelines for reentry into school. Basically, they consist of six mitigation strategies to use in combination to keep our staff and students safe. Those consist of good hand washing, good hand hygiene, social distancing when possible, face coverings, screening and cohorts and contact tracing. So Dr. Douglas can address some of those as they relate to the numbers of cases in Douglas County. And then we'll go back to the slideshow and review those specific mitigation strategies.
Sorry, Lisa, are you turning this over to me?
Yes.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Nice to be with you. You know, I pulled together a little bit of information about where Douglas County stands with the epidemic now. I think Lisa thought that might be helpful. So if you guys could help me get into that, thank you very much. Next slide, please. I want to just sort of quickly go through data points. You guys may know this stuff, but I want to give you a flavor of what's happening in Colorado and drill down to Tri-County, but more particularly Douglas County. So I'm going to show you information mostly about cases. I'm going to refer to hospitalizations, but these are daily cases in Colorado. Three-day averages shown on a daily basis statewide data beginning in March. And what I really want you to see is, you've probably seen this, but anyway, the pattern is that we, we had a growing, fairly rapidly growing epidemic in Colorado through late April. And then we began to taper off and we were doing really quite well. We began to open up more and more of our communities, businesses, gathering places, houses of worship, et cetera, et cetera. We hit our Nater sometime around June 10th, June 11th. Again, this is statewide. And then as you see, although there's ups and downs, we have been moving more or less continuously up since then. Some of the spiky business is due to the fact that we're running into problems with test results being delayed. Right now, this is the biggest headache I have as a public health director is that we've gone from getting stuff back in 24 to 48 hours to in some cases, five, six, seven, eight, nine days, which is really a problem when you think about things like contact tracing that Lisa referred to. Because if it takes that long for test results to come back, the, the data is kind of stale. Next slide, please. The state doesn't really show us statewide hospitalizations exactly day by day, data. So this is a cumulative curve. What I want you to notice sort of kind of, it's a little hard to interpret curves like this, I find, is that we went up in terms of number of hospitalizations. Remember, this is a time the epidemic was expanding and we were having outbreaks in long-term care facilities, for example. So we saw lots of people get sick faster. And as the case curve began to move down that saddle into early June, the hospitalizations began to flatten out. And although it's really hard on this kind of graph to see, the slope of that curve has begun to increase. Not a lot, really not a lot, but it's begun to increase in the last 10 days or so. So that's the state picture. Oh, one more state picture, next slide, please. I've already mentioned testing. So there's a couple of components for testing. First of all, we need to be doing enough testing. And for a long time, we were not doing enough testing. We've projected that we need, the governor said, when we were doing early loosening up, so to speak, and moving from stay at home to a safer at home environment, those were the names of the public health orders, that we needed around 8,500 tests a day statewide. Now that's just a statewide average and there are certain pockets where you could use more and others where you don't need as much. These are daily numbers, but what they're showing you is that we have been pretty progressively going up. I don't think we've been going up enough, but we have been increasing. What the red line shows you, and this is really an important statistic, and you undoubtedly have been hearing about the test positivity rate. This is the proportion of all tests, the test positive. And you want that number to be low. At one point, the World Health Organization said that number ought to be less than 10%. Increasingly, we think that number ought to be probably at least less than five and maybe closer to three to four or so. And what I want you to also see is that sort of saddle or that Nater that was occurring around that second week of June is when we got slightly the lowest, again statewide for test positivity, around 3%. And we have been creeping back up since then. All right, now that's the statewide panorama. Next slide, please. This is tri-county data. And let me first show you all three counties. Adams is orange and Arapahoe's red and the county you guys care about Douglas is in turquoise at the bottom. And you can tell, you really can't see this clearly, and I'll show you the Douglas in just a second, that we've got something that looks like the state. Not a surprise, by the way, since these three counties represent 25% of the state's population. But what we've been seeing statewide is, is reflected in the trends that we see really in all three of our counties. One thing I do want you to notice, the obvious, Douglas County to date, these are data as of this morning, has had just under 1,300 cases. That's a lot less than Adams and Arapahoe counties. Although that's a total case number, not a rate adjusted by population. And I'll show you some population adjusted numbers in just a second. Next slide, please. So it's a little clear to see Douglas County only if we look at just Douglas County only. So this is again, a seven-day rolling average. I think I didn't say that before. But once again, now I'm going back to that notion that we went up and went down. And now we've begun to go back up again. Now, one thing I want to make very clear, we've heard a lot of chatter nationally about is increased numbers of cases a bad thing? Or is this just detecting through better testing what's always been there? And we think as long as the test positivity rate stays low, it's probably just doing a better job of detecting what was out there. But when the test positivity rate begins to go up, then we do begin to get concerned. Because this is a little bit what things looked like in Texas and Florida and Arizona, maybe the week or so after Memorial Day. Now, that does not at all mean that that's where Colorado was going. But it does mean that that's the kind of thing Colorado's looking out for. Next slide, please. Now, finally, I'm going to give you some population adjusted data. So Douglas County is a growing county, but it's not quite as big as Adams and Arapahoe. And what I want you to see here, and again, a seven-day rolling average adjusted per 100,000 population, is that we had that same sort of trend, up, down, now back up. But Douglas County is beginning from a rate perspective to begin to close the gap a little bit with Arapahoe, not really with Adams. And what that really means is that the rate of increase is going faster right now in Douglas County than it is in the other two counties. Now, again, that could very easily be mostly testing. I don't want to say the sky is falling. I do, however, want to point out that we've got to be attentive to these kind of numbers because when Dr. Tucker talked about what we can plan for now, we really got to be attentive to what's happening in two, three, four, five, six weeks from now. And if there's one thing we know about a novel coronavirus is that it's new. And we keep getting thrown curveballs about stuff we didn't expect. Next slide, please. I'm not going to dwell on this because right now, the, 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 the news about bad stuff for COVID, you're sick enough to put in the hospital is staying really good. We went up in March and April, we came down. And in contrast to cases, we have not yet gone back up. That's great. That would be compatible with more testing, detecting more infections, but those not being the kind of infections that are filling hospitals in Phoenix and Houston and Miami, et cetera. But I want to remind you, that's what Phoenix and Houston and Miami were looking like, you know, a week or two after Memorial Day, which does not mean that their trajectory is our fate, but it is something we pay attention to. Next slide, please. I'm going to close with just a couple of remarks about test positivity. So again, color code, Adams, orange, Arapahoe, red, Douglas, turquoise. And when things were hot, our test positivity was higher, got as high as 30% or so. That's about what it is in Miami right now, by the way. And I think Phoenix is about 35, but it went down. And it went down as we did more testing and we were frankly, we think doing a better job of saturating what was going on. What I want to point to is that toward the right end of the graph, the gray stuff ignore because that's unstable data from the last week. We have delayed reporting and you can't really bank on that. But there is a slight incremental increase in our test rates that you can begin to see. Now, this again, just maybe noise and may go back down again. But it's the kind of thing that I am paying attention to, once again, with cautionary tales from other parts of the country. Next slide, and I think this is the last one. Oh, great. This is impossible to read. So all I want you to do is look at the dotted red line across the top. Each of our three counties has got a testing target set up. Thanks, that's great. And, and this is purely based on a national projection by Harvard School of Public Health, which did a lot of analysis and said, look, for the US to be doing really a reasonable amount of testing, not an optimal, but a reasonable amount of testing, we need a testing rate of 152 per 100,000 per day, which is God, where did that come from? And it was based upon an estimate of what was going on in mid-April and what we would need to detect and contain that. And so Douglas's allocation of 152 per 100,000 is just over 500 a day. And as you can see, we're getting closer and closer to target. So that's good. That's probably why the cases are going up. But as the test positivity rate begins to creep up and as it, as we will monitor both these things, both for the rest of July and as we get into August and then after school starts, these are the kind of key parameters we'll be watching out for. So I think that's what I wanted to cover. And Lisa, you and I didn't get our act together totally, but I'm happy to turn the wheel back over to you if you'd like to talk about the mitigation factors. Or I can also take questions, whatever you guys would prefer.
Yeah, Dr. Dr. Douglas, we had a chance to chat. One of the major questions of many that we're having, what's the best way to isolate a student or staff member who we presume is exhibiting signs of COVID? How do we then look at isolating or quarantining the student and staff? And what are the magic numbers that we look at in terms of whether we close a school down or we close a district?
Yeah, so this, these are fantastically important questions. And as Dr. Tucker knows, I'm going to disappoint you by not giving you the best answers possible. I will say that this emerging guidance that I wish had been here six weeks ago would have made my job easier and it would have made your board and Dr. Tucker's job a whole lot easier from both the CDC. They've got guidance that we heard today on a call with the Council of State and Territorial Epidemiologists, which is kind of the National Organization of Epidemiologists. CDC has rumored, but there've been a lot of rumors to be updating that guidance later this week. We know that the state health department, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment is updating their guidance for exactly the kind of question Dr. Tucker is asking, which is what do you do in a school when you have a case and a teacher? What are you doing in a school when you have a case in a student? What do you do when you have five cases, 10 cases, 15 cases? These are the really practical questions that all of you want to know. And I know Dr. Tucker wants to know. Right now, we do not have pristine guidance. The magic numbers are the following. The magic numbers are if you've been within six feet for 15 minutes of a case, you've got a reasonable chance of exposure. We believe that the use of face masks reduce that. But so far, that has not been fully quantitated into those set of magic numbers. Magic number, number two, is that when you've been, you're sick, you need to be in isolation for approximately 10 days. You need to be in isolation for up to seven days after your symptoms have cleared. There's been chatter about, do we test people before they come back? Honestly, that doesn't look like it's going to be promising enough to use it. The third, and frankly, and I think in a lot of ways, the most frustrating magic number is how long do you have to stay in quarantine? Isolation is when you're sick, you can't be around other people. Quarantine is when you've been exposed, you're not sick, but we don't want you to get sick. And you've got to kind of sequester yourself. There has been a robust debate as to what the right number is. The number that is being used right now is 14 days. Some of us think that 14 days might be hedging on the side of the perfect being the enemy of the good. We're having that conversation now, but right now, the guidelines is for that to happen. Now, the next question is, what happens in a class? Right now, if we have a class where we don't think social distancing's been maintained and we think there could have been 15 minutes within six feet, really everybody in the class, if somebody's sick, needs to be quarantined. Now, that feels incredibly draconian, but one of the things that Lisa and Dr. Tucker have worked on have been cohorting strategies to try to keep the number of people who have that kind of mixing to a minimum. What about two classes? What about five classes? What about 10 students or 15 students or 12 teachers? And honestly, we don't have a set of numbers right now that says if it gets to five, do this. If it's 10, that, if it's 15, this. The state and the CDC may be developing that as rough guidance, but honestly, what we have been doing, and we deal with a lot of outbreaks, not in schools, but in lots of places in the community, is to determine what's the context. Does it look like things are getting out of control? Or does it look like we've detected something that's not getting out of control? And it can be resolved within the school setting. The other thing I think will be needing to think about is does the external environment look more like Phoenix or Houston? Or does it look more like Douglas County right now? If it looks like Douglas County right now, I think we'll have a lot of latitude. Again, without giving you the parameters Dr. Tucker would like to have to make contextual judgment calls. If it begins to get more out of control, I think it'll be the threshold for having to make changes, whether that's hybrid learning, whether it's totally remote learning, I think will have to be taken into consideration. So I, again, I hope that we will be getting greater clarity, not only from CDE. I know that all schools have been waiting for CDE to issue its final guidance, but also from CDPHE, who's going to be issuing the outbreak response guidance. And then finally, from CDC, the federal agency who hopefully is going to be addressing both.
Dr. Douglas, another question or two. And again, thank you. You're, you're very gracious with your time. As you know, the majority of the school districts on the front range have decided to open in person at this moment. Again, we know things could change. We know we need to have plans in place. That's why we're really thinking, thinking about how we're going to ensure that we have a very effective e-learning platform. You alluded to that just a second ago. Is the recommendations still standing? That we continue, particularly here in Douglas County, open every day, five days a week in person? That we continue particularly here in Douglas County, open, uh, every day, five days a week in person?
At this point in time, that, I think that recommendation does make sense, Dr. Tucker. I think one thing you guys have probably heard, but let me emphasize, uh, kids, especially those less than ten years old. Really do appear to behave very differently than they do with influenza. And when we thought we had a epidemic that was behaving like flu in the spring, it made sense for the schools, schools to close down. What, what's emerged with an imperfect database, but nonetheless a growing one is the younger kids don't get infected very often. They don't get sick very often, they can, but they don't get very often. And when they do get infected, they don't transmit very often. And, and that, that observation, which is probably less true the older you get, you've got an eighteen-year-old football player, he's probably more like an adult in terms of transmission risk. Is, is one of the things that makes me think that the, the plans that you all have made, given the current epidemiologic context, makes sense. Now, I've been asked a lot of questions as the epidemic's gone on by colleagues in the community, your, your commissioners, your businesses. About trying to find the right balance. And I do believe balance is key for us managing and getting through the epidemic. There will not be, unless we all lock ourselves in our basements, a risk-free environment. There's just not gonna be. And I mean, even when we were on almost lockdown, stay at home, we were still having cases. We have essential workers, we have people who go out. So we're gonna see cases. But I do think that as we try to think about what's the best balance, it's really clear to me that the price our kids paid. Social, educational, mental health, uh, for some even nutrition, uh, was, is really an important price. It's an important, it's as important a price as to me, as a business closing and jobs being lost. And those are things that I, I, I'm taking into context, Dr. Tucker, when I said that I think we're at a place now where we ought to do full reopening.
Okay. Lisa, um, anything that you want to go ahead and add, come back and add for us, uh, in regards to comments that have been made?
I think Dr. Douglas articulated that beautifully, and I also think two additional resources. Are the American Academy of Pediatrics and newly released guidance from the Children's Hospital of Colorado. Which drill down a little bit further into the, um, operational implementation of these risk mitigation strategies. Prioritizing and tiering, um, some of those strategies and, and balancing them. If you can't do one, then we really have to pay more attention to the other strategies. For example, if you can't maintain six feet of distance, then perhaps mask wearing becomes more important. So, um, those two resources are excellent in terms of operational implementation.
Would you take a few minutes and talk more concretely about how we can use these mitigate mitigating strategies? In a way to better protect our students so that we're not just focusing on one particular strategy to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen?
Sure, so, you know, any combination of these strategies needs to be used one hundred percent of the time. So we, we know we have these six to work with and we know that if all students are in all seats. That the social distancing is going to be extremely challenging. So the next, you know, several mitigation strategies in this tiered platform that Children's Colorado uses. And is aligned with the American Academy of Pediatrics guidance would be to institute strict hand washing. And then utilize those face coverings when possible, and we know there are specific populations where that's not going to be easy. Our students with disabilities or medical conditions that don't allow that. Then moving down the tiers, what's the next best thing we could do? We could put face shields on those folks, especially for our SLPs who have to, um. The importance of, uh, reading a face is really critical in those therapies. So, and if that's not done, then what else can we do? We could back those students away from that and institute better social distancing. So there are combinations of strategies that could work to maximize, uh, the reduction of spread of COVID. For every student population. And, and that's, I think, what we've outlined.
Okay. Will you be able to, uh, hang around a little longer to answer some questions? I know, uh, the board wants to have some time to, uh, answer some questions, uh, that our folks, I'm sure. We have a ton of questions, this is a scary time for us. And, uh, I know there'll be additional health-related questions, uh, that we want to address. And, uh, Director Ray and Directors, if we want to go ahead and get to some of those questions, that, that's fine. And, and some point I also, uh, would like for, before the hour gets too late, Derek Fleishman, Principal at DC Oaks. As you know, uh, DC Oaks opened on the seventh. And we want Derek to spend some time talking to us, what was that, uh, to talk to us and share with us the opening plan. Along with, uh, one of his teachers, Mrs. Leanne Lad, uh, to give a teacher perspective.
Dr. Tucker, what I, what I think I'd like to suggest is that we break the presentation up into two parts. And if we've got questions regarding, um, the overview that Dr. Douglas and Ms. Cantor presented to us. Let's ask those questions now and respect Dr. Douglas's time.
Absolutely.
Then we'll take a break, the board will take a break and then we'll come back, uh, for the second part of the presentation with Ms. Mr. Fleishman and, and DC Oaks and, and. So, Director, do you have questions you have, uh, Mrs. Cantor or Dr. Douglas? Director Lang and then Director Graziano.
Hey, Dr. Douglas, I want to comment, you know, the wonderful job that you, you did, um, and we appreciate you to coming to talk to us today. Um, and also Lisa, thank you very much for being here. I have a specific questions related to, uh, uh, face covering and the face mask. Yesterday, the US Surgeon General Jeremy Adams in an interview say that. Surgeon General, I want people to understand why they should wear a face covering. And they are going to be more likely to do it and more likely to do it willingly. And they're going to be more likely to do it when we are not watching. Um, so he's advocating that a volunteer, um, face mask, uh, is probably a better strategy. So I want you to, um, I mean, give us some guidance as a school district. We have children that is as young as five years old in kindergarten and as old as eighteen years old in, uh, grade twelve. What will be your, um, professional opinions? Tell us which age is more age appropriate? We must require them to wear face masks. And, um, also, what land for the time per day they should wear it? And what kind of people are not supposed, you know, to wear it? You know, for the school district to consider.
Dr. Douglas?
Yeah, let me take a shot, although, uh, uh, Director Lang, I think we're going to be, uh, sort of working this out. As we go along in some ways, to be honest with you, I'll say a couple of things. First of all, the older kids, um, uh, are far and away the more important. Uh, they're bigger, they appear to be more infectious and, you know, I guess my stereotype is an older kid might get it. At least watching my grandkids, my older grandkids are more likely to wear a mask than my two-year-old granddaughter. We, we don't really have a, an absolute cut point. It looks like around ten or eleven is when, uh, below that age is when the viral transmission appears to go down. Above it, it appears to be higher and higher. Again, it's not an absolute cut point, but sort of a gradation. Uh, my own view is the more we can, so I would say honestly, we ought to use every, uh, approach we can to get the older kids to wear it. And whether that's called a mandate, it's kind of a fraught word right now, or a requirement. I do think the older kids really is where the energy ought to be. One thing I want to emphasize, Lisa did a great job talking about mitigation in terms of protecting our kids. But you guys know that a, a big part of the equation is your staff and your teachers. Um, and they are much more likely to be those who are vulnerable and could get infected. And at least in my circle, I, there's a lot of fear out there. And so I'm interested in things that will balance it for the kids and for the adults. Um, I honestly think we ought to be trying to as, encourage it as much as possible down to kindergarten. Now, in terms of, and then, and then below that, I will tell you that, um, uh, daycare centers that were open for essential workers. During the time of lockdown, uh, had kids wearing, uh, face coverings a lot. And this culture's not used to it, but those who work in those settings tell me, again, I'm not an expert on this. Is that it was not that hard to get the kids normatively involved in that. Now, it is absolutely not worth, um, a kid who's got a behavioral problem wearing a mask of any age. You know, I don't think we want to put teachers into a, a, a fraught or, you know, a fighting kind of, not fighting, but, but you know what I mean? A conflicting sort of situation. There are clearly kids who have trouble with, uh, uh, having cloth over their face either because of breathing problems. Or because of, uh, underlying behavioral issues. Um, and I don't really have a list of, you know, here's the eighteen medical conditions that we shouldn't ask our kids to do. And I think it's going to, I would take those general categories, breathing difficulties, uh, difficulties, uh, of one behavioral sort or another. Or kids who the teacher needs to see their face. I've, I'm not a teacher, I think some of you guys are from reading your bios and you know better than I do. When a kid needs to see a teacher's face and when a teacher needs to see a kid's face. And I think we want to try to figure out a way that gives the teacher that sort of, uh, really autonomy in a classroom to make that with the notion that. The default in circumstances as much as possible ought to be wearing the mask.
Really, Doctor, thank you, Dr. Douglas, Director Graziano, and then, uh, Director Meek.
Dr. Douglas and Ms. Cantor, thank you so much for, for this tonight, appreciate it. My question is really just, it's very simple and it comes from having spoken to someone who I know who contracted the virus. Is this around like, uh, regarding a, an active case? So if someone has an, an active case and they are tested multiple times, um, throughout that. Does that count still as one individual case or does it count each time as the multiple times of the, that you have that case?
One case. We, with, and we, I mean, there could be errors, but, but the intent is to not have duplication.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Very good, Director Meek.
Um, thank you, Dr. Douglas and Ms. Cantor for being here tonight and for helping us really think through this evolving situation. You know, we're all in the same storm, but we're all in really different boats. And based on your age, your economic status, your work environment, you know, everyone's dealing with this very differently. And Dr. Douglas, you mentioned earlier the fear that's out there. Uh, our employees are the lifeblood of our organization, just like any organization. What should we be doing to ensure that we are putting our employees, you know, um, health and safety where it needs to be? And if you can just speak to that, that would be very helpful.
Well, I do think the, uh, strategies that Lisa talked about are going to be really critical, both to actually reduce transmission, but to also convey. That the organization cares about reducing transmission. Frankly, that's one of the reasons why, as much as possible, if we can get the, the kids below. The age of sixth grade to wear masks, I think that it, it's normative, it conveys a culture that this transmission prevention is important. And I think at least for some folks, it, it, uh, sort of enhances comfort. I think Lisa's right that none of these strategies are perfect and they, they all, that they can be effective, even if they're not a hundred percent each and of themselves. But the more we can do each of these, the better, uh, or as completely as possible, I think the better. A third thing to mention is that, um, we, uh, Dr. Tucker and I talked a little bit about this before this afternoon. I think that is helping teachers get access to testing, uh, uh, as rapidly as possible when they get sick, I think can allay anxiety. Um, and I think it frankly will help you with infection control in the classroom. Fourthly, uh, you know, you know, I think we're going to have, I mean, you know this, I'm telling you just human psychology, we're going to have. It's estimated thirty percent of our population is either above an age where risk begins to increase fifty, fifty-five. And or has an underlying disease, um, and trying to really give those folks tools to minimize that as much as possible. One of the things AAP says, uh, Lisa mentioned, American Academy of Pediatrics. Is that spacing between the teacher and the class is probably more important than spacing between student A and student B. Cause the teacher's the one who can get sick. And so I think seeking opportunities in the classroom to, or, or as you figurally, uh, spatially configure your classroom. I'm sure Dr. Tucker and Lisa are thinking about this, to get that teacher, uh, as much space as possible is, is really, uh, important for that.
Can you just speak to when testing should happen?
Well, in an ideal world, we would probably test people in settings like schools on a regular basis. We, ideal and regular could mean, uh, uh, weekly or monthly. We are absolutely not in an ideal world. We are trying really hard to do that in nursing homes, long-term care facilities where we've seen explosions, matches and gasoline. And honestly, I don't think that's as higher priority in schools. I think the most important thing is an individual who becomes symptomatic. Getting that individual tested as soon as possible and symptomatic, I don't mean a, a, you know, a, a COVID-relevant symptom. That would, to me, would be the most important trigger. One thing I think would is also, I have no idea what the vaccination rate in your, your teachers is. In a healthcare organization, you know, we really push for ninety-eight percent for flu. And the more we can get everybody across our community, including your staff, flu vaccinated, the better. Because the flu vaccines are never perfect, but they often provide thirty, forty, fifty percent protection. And they will, A, reduce that health problem. B, it'll reduce some of the absenteeism you've got in your classrooms. And C, it'll reduce some of the confusion that if we can reduce, you know, thirty, thirty-five percent of the flu-like symptoms by virtue of a vaccine. That's that much less we'll have to worry about in terms of being potentially confused with COVID.
Thank you, Director Holtzman.
Yeah, so thank you, Dr. Douglas, for being here and thank you for everything you're doing to lead in our community and help keep us safe. We really appreciate it. My question, I know I have also many, so I'm going to go with this one. Um, to social distancing, um, you know, I think the commonly heard recommendation is six feet. I know that the American Academy of Pediatrics has said, um, and I want to read it. Three feet may approach the benefits of six feet of space, particularly if students are wearing face coverings and are asymptomatic. Schools should weigh the benefits of strict adherence to a six-feet spacing rule between students with the potential downside. If remote learning is the only alternative. So I guess I just would ask if you agree with that? And then a follow-up being, when our board looks at our plan. And sees places where there's differing public health guidance or even sometimes conflicting, um, or things that. For instance, um, Governor Polis, I believe, still has some orders, uh, uh, regarding how many people can be inside together and how many can be outside. Um, so I'm sorry that this is a two-part question, but, but that question being, um, what is, what is your advice to us in that situation? I know I've heard you talk about protect your neighbor status and things like that. So if you could talk a little bit about that, but lead with the social distancing three to six feet.
So, um, you know, we talked about magic numbers earlier and six is one of those magic numbers and it's, it's, you know, it's a best judgment. And if you look at curves of respiratory droplet, uh, spewage. And even look at things like, uh, closed quarters when people get it or don't get it, it's a curve. So nothing magic happens at six feet. And you do, the State Health Department is using part of that as, uh, some of those analytics as part of their guidance. And you get about seventy-five percent of your reduction of respiratory droplet transmission by three feet, by one meter. And you get another, I don't know, twenty-five, not, not exactly twenty-five, because nothing's perfect, maybe twenty with the extra three feet or one meter. So I think that's where the notion that, look, if I've got a face mask that's reducing respiratory droplet spewage by fifty, sixty percent. And I've got three feet, that's where you get, I'm pretty close to six feet. So, uh, I bet, and then in terms of competing guidance, it's everybody's worst nightmare. You know, I guess I would say that, um, first of all, I, I, I think what the state has produced has been somewhat confusing about which orders apply to. produced has been somewhat confusing about which orders apply to schools. I've spent probably six to eight hours last week trying to find out, what is the truth right now? And the truth, as far as I can tell it, is that the existing public health orders do not apply to schools.
Correct.
The guidance applies to schools, but because you guys have the curse and the luxury of being locally controlled and autonomous, you get to consider the guidance. Um, I, that could change if we get into a Houston-Phoenix kind of setting. We're not there. Hopefully, we don't get there. But I would say at this point, if you get competing guidance, you know, first, Lisa is, I'm not just throwing Lisa a bone, she's the most savvy wellness person I've encountered in the public school district. She's asking me more questions than I've ever dreamed of, and she knows the answers to most of them herself. So, Lisa's really good. But this is where we want to work with you guys, is to sort of say, you're right, this is really confusing, and how do we help you sort this through? And honestly, our answer in August might end up being different in October or November, because the data may change and the nature of the epidemic might change.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
All right, directors. And Dr. Douglas, again, just to echo all the accolades you continually receive, we are just so grateful that you are willing to give us your time. We, I see you everywhere. I don't know when you sleep, as a matter of fact. So we're just in great admiration, and what a great compliment to our Mrs. Cantor. Um, you know, that doesn't get anything better than that when you have the head of Tri-County Health saying, we've got one of the best. So there we go, Douglas County. I do see Director Hanson's hand, so we will end this session with her, then board, we're going to take a break. Director Hanson.
Thank you, Director Ray. Um, Dr. Douglas, you mentioned the need to quarantine if anyone was exposed for a 15-minute period within a six-foot space. And the reality is that that's essentially describing every classroom within our district. And so I'm just hoping for some clarification. Is, is that exposure to someone who has been confirmed positive? Or is that exposure to someone who has also been potentially exposed?
It's definitely the former. It's a case, it's somebody who's positive, not a contact of a contact. It's a really important distinction, and it's the former. Now, let me say that I am going to be working over the next week with the state health department guidance to sort of query whether there is any, right now, wearing a mask doesn't gain you any points in terms of the six feet, 15-minute thing. And I think if we're, if we've got settings where we're pretty clear that that happened, I think we ought to take that into consideration. But I, but I want to say that carefully, because we're trying not to be just, you know, going rogue and just making it up as we go along. We do want to try to be attentive to, and I do, into the state guidance. And I think, you know, frankly, what people I talk to who actually run classrooms tell me is, I don't know, how would I know? There's 30 kids in there. How can we really sort that out? And, and so I, I think that may be one of the reasons why we have to default to what might seem to be somewhat draconian, but, um, I don't know, I tend to talk too long. I probably went beyond your question, but I hope I got at what you're asking.
Absolutely. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, directors. Again, Douglas, thank you so much. And Ms. Cantor, I'm assuming you'll be back with us after a break maybe? And let's take about a 10-minute break, directors, and reconvene at 8:10.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
You, too.
Douglas, appreciate your time.
Okay, directors, if you can unmute your videos and that way I know that we're all back.
Yep, he's back.
Okay, directors, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene our regular session of our board meeting and Dr. Tucker, part two.
Okay, Director Ray, as you stated, maybe we'll hear from Derek Fleishman, our principal at DC Oaks, and Mrs. Ladd, the consumer and family science teacher, so we don't keep them up too late to talk about what these, as we're in the second week now, what the atmosphere has been opening up since March. And we know that DC Oaks is a smaller school, but certainly there are great lessons that we can learn and that we'll certainly will learn from the opening of DC Oaks. Mr. Fleishman, are you with us?
Yes, Dr. Tucker.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Fleishman. Nice to have you here.
Good evening, Director Ray. So DC Oaks opened with the idea of coming out on a 50% attendance ratio in the AM and the PM. Given the guidance at the time was a little bit different, but since we're already started, we were going with the best that we knew at the time. A couple of things that I need to say really quickly, I'm just so thankful for the support of the board, cabinet members, direct department members, but you know what, I just want to give a huge shout out to Corey Wise and to Brian Wood for their support during our reopening plan. When I was addressing our students on the first day, I told them, and I absolutely meant it, I would not have done this with any other group of students on the planet. Our students love coming to school. They have conveyed to us how much they have missed it. I would not be as confident as I am walking into our building every day if it was not for that group of kids and for our staff. So the reason we needed to come back to school on top of our kids missing it is approximately 60% of our kids have only been in our building for, or less than 60% of our kids have been in our building for one quarter. We are just thankful for the opportunity to come back, even if it's only for a few weeks, just to try to redevelop our culture, have our teachers touch base with our students and talk about if we have to go remote, here's what it looks like. And it's been wonderful. I can honestly tell you outside of a couple of incidents where a student has forgot to pull their mask back up over their nose, every single one of our kids has been on board with wearing a mask. They all do the temperature checks. They're all happy to be back. We have lots of parents that are happy that their students are back. And for the most part, our staff is absolutely thrilled to be back. Seeing our kids in our building absolutely reminds me and all of our staff of why we do what we do. It's because we love kids. Hearing our kids be excited to be back at school, which is traditionally a group of kids that is very hesitant and reticent to come to school, and they are thrilled to be back. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who's been a part of our reopening. It has been absolutely amazing to have our kids back in the building. I want to give it to Leanne Ladd briefly to talk about from a teacher's perspective how it has been, and then would love to answer any questions that you guys have.
Good evening, Mrs. Ladd. How are you?
Good, thank you. I'll echo what Derek has said about our students. The level of respect that they show, the seriousness of this moment in our lives is pretty amazing. You know, history found the students at DC Oaks in this pandemic. And with grit and resiliency, they chose to accept this challenge with optimism and courage. So we have no issues with kids not wanting to wear a mask, not wanting to social distance. I mean, they want this to work and they want to be a part of the solution. So it has helped a lot. I was really nervous to return. I was lucky to be under the leadership of Derek Fleishman and Brian Wood. And they have, you know, been heroic in their efforts to help us make this reopening happen.
Ms. Ladd, anything from students or parents that you've heard that you would like to share with the board?
They're so happy to be back. And you know, Derek's right. It reminds you of why we're doing what we're doing and why all of us are working so hard. It's, you know, Dr. Douglas stated the mental health issues, the social emotional issues. I mean, those needs are tremendous and they are best met when we are with our students and when they are with each other.
And Mrs. Ladd, can you continue that what can I, as superintendent, what can the board, what can cabinet district administration, the overall community can do to support our teachers, our support staff and students along the lines of social, emotional, mental health type things?
You know, Dr. Tucker, you set as a priority for all of us to maintain that connection with kids. And certainly under Derek's leadership, Derek and Brian were in touch with our stakeholders constantly throughout the quarantine and the shutdown. And so I think that that just reestablished in the minds of the parents and the students how important the connection is. And so any opportunities we have to communicate with the families and let them know how the students are doing at school, to build on the communication, getting to know our students, making sure they realize that each one of them are important. We want them there, but we want, and we want them there under safe situations. Establishing those connections, building those relationships, we have so many new students to Douglas, to DC Oaks, that this time is really imperative. And so, you know, I find that emails that I send to parents, phone calls that I send to parents, giving them feedback on their kids is even more greatly appreciated than it ever has been.
So Dr. Tucker, would you like us to ask some questions or sure? So again, thank you for both of you for being the pioneers in this new norm, as they say, in terms of restarting the school. Tell me again, in terms of, you said everybody's pretty well received in terms of putting the mask on. Have you had staff members or teachers who are students who have said, no, I will not wear a mask? And can you talk about?
I apologize, Director Ray. So we originally opened with the idea of suggested masks. And I think we all have a different interpretation of what suggested masks actually means. Due to the kind of gray area that that caused, we went ahead and adjusted our guidance to masks are required inside of the building, just so that we can make sure that everyone is under the exact same interpretation of what that means. Student wise, I have not had a single student say that they would not wear a mask. As I mentioned, our kids love coming to school. And that is something that is absolutely the most wonderful thing to say in the world. We've had three kids in our three school days show up without a mask and they both, they've all come up to me and said, I don't have a mask and I get one. And you know, we're lucky enough with, you know, Rich Cosgrove and his department supplying us 150 masks. We have plenty of masks to give out at any time. All of our students walk up. Chris Lawson and his team created a QR code so that they could do the health screen as they walk up. Most of our students have that preloaded as they come to me to get their temperature taken. All of our kids just say, hey, good morning, good afternoon. It's so good to be here. They're just, they're participating 100% in everything that we are asking them to do. You know, when you get into the staff conversation, I don't want to get into the politics of it, but I mean, you're arguing different things. And I think if we didn't mention that, we would be naive to what is happening in the world around us. We are, we are working through and trying to navigate those situations to the absolute best of our ability and we will continue to do so. But you know, staff enjoys being with kids too. Nobody enjoyed the fourth quarter where we were not with kids. I have not met an educator that was like, you know what, if I could design education, that's what I would do. Nobody that I work with has said that. Now, mask wise, there are some different opinions and we're working through that, but that's part of all of this coming back process. So they've been good thoughtful conversations and we will continue to have those with staff members. But our kids are absolutely standing on their heads because they love coming to school.
That's great. That's great. Director Long, saw your hand up. Go ahead.
And again, thank you very much for the wonderful job you know that you guys are doing. As the first, as President Ray said that, to navigate this new frontier. I would like to ask you, did you see a certain job of from the parent volunteer, student volunteer, I mean, the teacher coming back to work? Does anybody in your staff have any reservations whatsoever about we are putting them, you know, in danger? And how do you consult the staff to make sure that anybody's voice being heard that work for you?
Perfect. So two questions and they're Director Long. First question in terms of parent volunteers, the one thing we really try not to do is to bring parents into our building. A lot of our kids have had not, have not had the best experience with parents, so we don't have a lot of parent volunteers. So I cannot speak to if that is increased or decreased because we don't have a lot of exposure to it. In terms of staff, I apologize.
Yeah, I want to jump in here in regards to parent volunteers. When you look at our framework and you look at our plan for full-time reentry, we're really, if you will, not allowing parents and volunteers at this time in our buildings. So again, that's part of our framework, part of our plan.
In terms of staff and their hesitation to come back, Director Long, we've worked really heavily with Amanda Thompson and Kathy Franklin to develop all sorts of avenues for staff to reach out, should they not feel safe coming back. Staff is working through that. We've had a couple of requests for things, which obviously I can't talk about here, but in terms of our staff, I've not had anybody say I will not come back to work.
Directors, any other questions? Director Meek.
Love the unmute button. So thank you both for your time and talking with us tonight. DC Oaks is an amazing school. I think your structure is a little different than our traditional schools when it comes to student counts. If you could maybe talk a little bit about how many students, I know you're doing that split as well. And knowing that that's really not how the rest of our schools are structured, maybe what recommendations or thoughts you might have, given your lessons learned so far?
Okay, I'll try to get through this as easily as I possibly can. So we have about 123 students in our school at the start of this quarter. We have had five students reach out to say that they would like to do online classes for this quarter. We came out initially, as I mentioned, in a 50% AM and 50% PM posture so that we can make sure that we met all of the guidelines at the time. Our classrooms are fairly small, so yes, we are small, but we also have classrooms that cannot hold more than four students with the social distancing standards that are currently in place. So that's kind of how we designed it. We broke them up by alpha and it worked really well for us. As you mentioned, big high schools, they're, you know, even our middle schools and some of our elementaries are fighting a totally different fight than we are fighting at DC Oaks. But I think given everything that we're going through in our world right now, all of those hours absolutely were worth the work to get our kids back in the building.
Good.
I'm not sure if I fully answered your question, Director Meek.
No, it's great. Thank you.
Director Tontia Shore?
Hello, Mr. Fleishman. Well, thank you. Great to see you again. Actually, my question is for you and Dr. Tucker regarding mandatory mask wearing for teachers. What, I guess I'm asking, is it mandatory? And if it's mandatory, what are the consequences if the teachers are not wearing masks?
Dr. Tucker?
Thanks, Derek. Yes, we are, all staff pre-K through 12 are required to wear a mask in the building. Obviously, if a teacher or staff member is walking out in the parking lot headed to their car, that's some of the few exceptions. The medical issues that may preclude a staff member from wearing a mask. And it's also with staff, a mask or a clear face shield, especially when engaging in instruction. We don't want this to sound punitive. We never have our district or any district really shouldn't be about punishing folks. It's gonna, we're gonna ask our principals to really sit down and work with that staff member to work out his or her concerns about not wanting to wear a mask. And we also have the wonderful guidance of HR to assist us as well. So if we need to make accommodations for staff, and we do know we will need to make accommodations for staff with masks, we'll do that.
Thank you. Mr. Fleishman, your particular school is really dependent on building, all schools are dependent on building relationships with kids. And, and your particular school does such an amazing job with that, with really small numbers in place. If you were with your current experience, if you were in charge of a high school that was larger, would you be making any requests or changes to the opening of your school?
So first off, I thank everything wholly in my life that I am not one of our nine traditional high school principals. They do an absolutely amazing job for literally cities at a time. If, and what I have shared with them is kids in the buildings is absolutely worth it. I cannot, that it is worth its weight in gold to have our students back in buildings. I think we need to be very strategic with how we roll this out. My best advice would be to caution them with being slow and being, being on point because it is such a politically charged time. We want to make sure we're meeting the needs of our students, our parents and our staff members. We've had great conversations. We need to continue having great conversations. I know Dr. Tucker is getting, and the staff is getting to ready to roll out a questionnaire to our parents and to our students to figure out what they're interested in. I think the more answers we know, the more questions that we answer before we go into it, it's going to be better for our entire district. And as we open and get things figured out, I think it's going to be better for our state and eventually better for our country. So the more questions that we can ask as quickly as possible, I think that that is my best suggestion at this point. But what I've heard from our community is our parents and our students want to be back in the building.
Thank you. So I'm reiterating that I think what you're saying is the one request you would have is to make sure that we are answering the questions of our parent community and our teachers and our staffs as well. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And actually, Ms. Ladd, is there anything that you would like to add from that, from a teacher perspective?
You know, I believe that for me, a big thing is having everybody in the building wearing masks. That makes me feel quite a lot safer. The one thing we've taken advantage of at DC Oaks and the bigger schools might be able to do this as well, is setting up outdoor classrooms. Our classes, the size of our classrooms at DC Oaks is really small. So if I have an overflow, too many for that class period, I gathered up a bunch of camp chairs. I take them out on the side of the building on the yard and I set them six feet apart. And we've been able to hold some really nice classes outside. That makes me, I mean, I think it's safer to be outside, so I'm happy to do that. But I do feel from a teacher perspective, there have to be those safety measures in place. And when inside a building, I think everybody in the building should have on a mask.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, again, thank you, Mr. Fleishman, Ms. Ladd, for all the work you're doing. Please thank DCO Kids for really setting the tone, setting the model of how we are to follow. So please congratulate them on a great job as well. So thank you both for being here tonight.
Absolutely. And as I mentioned, thank you all for your support. And again, I want to give a quick shout out to Brian Wood, our DMO students and Corey Wise, who work so hard, and to our wonderful staff and student body.
You bet. Great. All right, Dr. Tucker, batons passed back to you, my friend. Dr. Tucker, you're muted still?
Yes, I would like to spend some time, Director Ray and our directors and the many folks who are tuning into tonight's board meeting, to answer some questions or concerns that may not have been raised in our 71-page strategic reentry plan, our framework that is, or answer some questions in the plan that we presented tonight for reentry, coming back to school in person, five days a week. I, I think we've covered especially the men of the health concerns. I know we haven't covered all of them, but with the work of Dr. Douglas and Mrs. Cantor, we've covered, at least had conversations and provided some detail about some of those things. But what questions would folks have for me? And before we get into answering some of those questions, obviously, I'm gonna call on cabinet members and DOS if they're, if we need additional detail. But this is not the beginning of this conversation. We've been working with our task force here for a couple of months now. You know, with 17, 18,000 respondents to surveys about how staff and how parents would like to see return to in-person, return to school. And the various scenarios that go with that will be obviously having a greater time, having conversations or engaging in dialogue with our students via survey. And then also, we want to perhaps, if we can, set up some focus groups with students as well. Because at the, at the end of the day, we need to make sure we're protecting our staff and our students and in our school community. So this is just the beginning of our communication. We're gonna have a couple town hall meetings as well in the future. We'll send, after the board votes tonight, we'll send out a formal letter from me, again, informing the parents of what our intentions are. But also underscoring that we do have plans in place for an e-learning opportunity for all of our students, more robust than what we had in the fall. And I want to underscore the last thing before we take questions is that this is fluid. As Dr. Douglas mentioned, you know, these numbers could change between now and the opening of school. We 100% get that. This is not, I don't want our people to say, this is just a plan created by a few people and this is it. It's not gonna change or we have our feet in cement. That's not it. We want to, our job here again is to improve and save the lives of our community. And you can't do that by being married to one plan and not being flexible.
So Dr. Tucker, so it sounded like you'd like us to ask questions regarding the strategies for the health, safety. Are we going to also talk about more logistics in terms of the startup? Or do you want us just to start with just the health and safety strategies that we've seen in the PowerPoint slide deck? Although the public hasn't actually seen that presented to us tonight, it's attached to our board agenda for anybody that wants to view it. But are you wanting to just?
No, I want to go, I want to go back to that. I want to go back to this plan here and speak very, very specific about one or two things. I won't spend a whole lot of time going back over the PowerPoint, our plan, because it's been out, you know, since Friday. And really bring attention to some specific things and then answer any questions that the board members have regarding any portion of the plan. And so I'll ask Mr. Sethi to take us to, take us to page four. And this will answer some of the questions that, many of the questions and email messages and greatly appreciate all of them that we have. And again, I won't talk a whole lot about these plans, but things, if we've already covered them, we've discussed them tonight. I want, again, this is a plan to have in-person learning, five days a week. This is pre-K through 12. We do have contingencies built in the framework, but this is not one of the contingencies. We will be ready to roll into one of those contingencies. But also in this in-person learning, when we looked at the survey results, majority of staff and our parents said they would like a five-day-a-week return to school with, with an e-learning option. Again, this could change quickly under the direction of the governor, local and state health departments. And speaking of our governor, the governor has the final authority to close schools. to close schools as he did back in March. As a local control, as a local control state, the board and the school can make that decision as well if those cases continue to, to rise. Right now, as I said, the majority of the schools on the front range are planning again, in-person, five-day-a-week arrangement. Our charter schools, we talked about that earlier, have the autonomy to design their own operations and their educational delivery. But they need to also comply with state and national emergency declarations and public health declarations by the governor. So want to make emphasis of that. Next slide, please. Obviously, you know, we're in the business of taking care of kids, but we're also in the business of academics. We're going to make sure that we provide the tools and training to diagnose students' learning needs. I think it was Director Meek who talked about the COVID slide or the homework slide. And so when our students do get back, we need to make sure that we're able to diagnose some of the learning needs or gaps in, in our students' learning over the summer. A big, big thank you to our technology department. Gotham Sethi and his folks have done a wonderful job of ensuring our students have not only access to devices, but also Wi-Fi access to the internet. We talk about equity and this really helps to close the equity gap in our district. Next slide. Personalized learning under, you know, Nancy Ingles Department, who heads that area. We want to make sure that we continue to reach and meet the needs of all of our students. Students who are on I E Ps, just because we're not in person, if we happen to switch there, we still have a legal mandate as well as an educational mandate to ensure all of our students, our students with I E Ps, that we are providing them a free and appropriate public education. The same thing is for our gifted students. We need to make sure that we're completing the A L P plans and we're following the guidelines by the Colorado Department of Education. And also our folks who play a big part in ensuring that this is carried out, our school counselors, ensuring that we're advising our students, but taking care of many of their social and emotional learning needs as well. And the students will, we're also including every student here. We're including our student whose English may not be their first language. Upcoming professional development, this is our schedule right here to provide ongoing professional development. As you all know, that we were scheduled for August seventh as a opening day, that day has, is now a professional development day. I had the pleasure of chatting with all of our principals today. And they really expressed some concerns about having PD opportunities. What can the district do? Asking the question. What can the district do to assist our principals, our building leaders with PD, especially along the lines of e-learning? And when we get to the next steps, I will be asking the board or informing the board, we would like to extend a couple more days during that first week of opening school for professional development days. Next slide, please. There are the dates right there. The tenth is first day orientation day. And again, we want to add some more days to that. September eighteenth, Friday, is a student contact day. It was formerly a staff professional development day. Okay, next. We talked about the health guidelines. I'm going to ask Mr. Sethi to kind of, okay, we're fine. I, I want to talk a little bit about the physical distancing. We've talked a lot about that and about the three-foot or, or, or six-foot distance barrier or three-foot distance barrier. Based upon my conversations with health officials and our state head of, of education here, our state superintendent of public education, Dr. Katie Anthes, and she does an outstanding job. My best guess is that we receive the guidance, and as Dr. Douglas said very well, because this is a locally controlled state, much of what we're going to get will be guidance in terms of how we bring students back. Sure, the magic number is six feet, but if we can maintain at least three feet with those other mitigating opportunities that Mrs. Cantor talked about, the mask, ensure we have hand washing, et cetera, they're going to consider that as well. We're looking at with our principals, and I know principals and, and teachers, you know, we have, you know, not a whole lot of time to get this down. That's why I would like to add some additional professional development days that first week to look at passage in the, in the hallways, especially in our larger schools, our larger elementary, middle and high schools. Do we have two-way passages and so forth or one way? We need to look at building exits and entries and so forth, staggered recess. How do we continue at the elementary level to keep our kids in grade levels or cohorts? At the secondary level, obviously, we talked a little bit about this, limiting or perhaps discontinuing the use of lockers and watching the between time when class passes. And also no assemblies and performances right now. Next slide. Face coverings, we've talked quite a bit about face coverings. That's going to probably, we're probably going to get some, some additional guidance from the Colorado Department of Education. And our goal, folks, is to ensure that we're following the latest and best guidance coming from our local health officials and the Colorado Department of Education. If we do that, we're going to keep our, we're going to keep our kids, we're going to keep our staff, our community members safe. And we're going to keep our folks at home safe as well. As we said with teachers, we're going to require all teachers to, you know, wear a face mask. We're going to require all of our secondary students. And then maybe next week, right now, we're, you know, we're recommending that all elementary students were recommending, not required at this time, that they wear a face mask. Again, that could change by the time school begins on the tenth. Next. Daily symptoms checks. I don't know if Mr. Fleishman is around, but certainly I know Mrs. Sethi is here because he's controlling my computer for me. We are going to require a complete daily symptom check. We want that to be done preferably at home for all students and staff. In the event that they are incomplete, we will have staff here in the district, obviously, who will enter some current information about students' temperatures and answer a few symptoms questions. In the event the symptoms checks are not complete, we will follow that up with, you know, with that staff member or with a student. And those with a temperature of a hundred degrees or higher, we will ask them to return home. We will have a special area in our building for those staff members who are students who may be, maybe experiencing some symptoms of COVID. Additional guidance around that will be forthcoming. Next slide, please. And we've talked about hand washing and sanitizing. And we'll have hand washing stations and other sanitizing mechanisms in every classroom. And I've talked with Mr. Cosgrove, our COO, and we have plenty of masks available for every school. And we have plenty of sanitizing solutions at every school. Mr. Cosgrove, are you with us at this time?
Yes, Dr. Tucker. Thanks for the question.
Sure.
We do have masks extra. We will continue to have that. We are targeting having masks, disinfections, chemicals, as well as hand sanitizer, in addition to the normal soap and paper towels for an entire school year. And our goal is to have sanitizing dispensers throughout the building, sanitizer bottles in every room, as well as a sanitizer dispenser on every bus.
And Mr. Cosgrove, while we have you, I've received quite a few emails regarding classroom ventilation and increase in circulation of outdoor air. What is our status right now?
Yes, so thanks for the question. Per the CDC guidance and EPA guidance, we have reviewed our HVAC programming and we are working with our contractor who will program all of our HVAC systems or our central control system to provide two flushings a day. And that's basically starting at about three or four in the morning, bringing in outside air through the dampers and circulating that for a minimum of two hours throughout the building before school, as well as around the seven or eight o'clock hour after school. That is recommendations. Also, we are continuing to review our filter changeouts. We replace filters throughout the district multiple times a year. We have about forty-plus types of filters. And we continue to see what we can improve based on the size of the motors without either burning up the motors or freezing up the coils. You want to increase the filters. I will say, however, that our current filter is a industry standard filter, but we always want to see if we can improve those. This includes the mobiles, too. We want to improve the filters on the mobiles as well as be able to open up the windows to bring in outside air.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sethi, next slide. And I'll, I'll make mention of nutrition services. As you know, we have hundreds of thousands of heroes here in our district and certainly want to thank our folks in Nutrition Services for helping to provide meals for our students in our community. So thank you. At this point, with the best research that we have, this could potentially change. Our students will eat all meals in the cafeteria, following health and safety guidelines reviewed in our previous slides and also in our conversation with Dr. Douglas and Mrs. Cantor. Again, we will maintain the distance, the appropriate distance. We, we talked about kids obviously will not have their mask when, when they're eating, when they get up, obviously, from eating, they'll wash their hands. And they will put their mask on when they go to recess or headed back to class. This could change. This could be an issue where students will get the meal, pick up the meal in the cafeteria and go back to their classroom. But based upon the best information we have right now, that's the recommendation from our task force. Next slide, please. Bus capacity, we've discussed that with our building leaders and we've had conversations with folks about this. Right now, we're going to fill buses. I think, Rich, about a third to capacity. If siblings or bus riders will be able to put those students on the same seat. But Rich, can you talk a little bit about what does this mean for ridership?
Yes, Dr. Tucker. Thank you so much for the question. Right now, the guidance is twenty-six students per seventy-seven passenger bus. That is an improvement and an update from the June twenty-third presentation to the board. The task force, as you recall, it did nine students or twenty-six, and we do not need a waiver for twenty-six. That provides thirty-four percent of a typical bus. Understanding we have different sizes of buses. And so in alignment with the task force recommendations to the board, we would be able to bus one hundred percent of eligible students for students with special needs, including homeless and foster, and approximately thirty-four percent of the general education busing capacity. So the task force recommendations in the framework that was discussed last board meeting included the elimination of routes that do not align with current board policy. And that's with stops within walk zones, within gated communities where the gates are within one mile of the home and we would pick up at the gates. Field trips, before and after school, I B and band routes, as well as open enrollment. And issuance of the new smart tag cards, thanks to the board and to the voters for increased, not only increased security, but to readily identify the siblings. Those would only be issued to eligible riders. And the recommendation from the task force was to honor the most rural routes and distant routes and determine how many students will be riding those and how many drivers and buses are needed at twenty-six students per bus. And you basically start at the outside radius and work yourself in until you've exhausted your bus drivers. That's the impact on transportation.
All right, next slide.
All right, Dr. Tucker, can I just ask a quick clarifying question?
Absolutely, yes.
So, so are you saying, Rich, that sixty, what is it, sixty-six percent of our students who normally have gotten a bus ride last year will not be eligible with our current state?
That's correct. Understanding, right now, we're simply running the scenarios based on the matriculation of last year's riders. And when we have expressed check-in, we will be able to confirm in alignment with the task force survey that showed that less riders would sign up for ridership. So we don't know the impact yet, but it will be a significant impact on the general education ridership. Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide. Health and safety guidelines relative to activities and athletics that it, that also includes marching band, our fall athletic sports. Right now, again, Chassa, the high school sanctioning, sports sanctioning body here in Colorado, could change its stance on this. Right now, the plans are to return as much as possible to normal in alignment with the current health and safety guidelines. Also, those students who decide to participate in e-learning versus in-person, they will have access to DCSD athletics and activities. And students enrolled in e-learning may participate on an equal basis in any extracurricular interscholastic activity offered in the building. Next. Mental health supports and student engagement. I'm going to ask Nancy Ingles, you know, who heads up our PLS program, if she would please give us an update on what supports and student engagement activities that we are offering, will be offering our students. And as you know, this is, you know, this is as important aspect of any part of educating our students. So Nancy, if you talk a little bit about some of the variety of student mental health supports that we'll continue to make available to students and staff.
Good evening, board directors. Our prevention and mental health teams have been busy throughout the spring and summer, preparing for the start of you, of the year. Regardless of the scenario that we're in, they have been preparing a lot of PD offerings that will, that actually began in May and will continue through the end of July into the beginning of the school year. They have been compiling several resources and tools that will be available for classroom teachers, counselors, mental health providers, things that they can use daily in classrooms and in school settings. And they've also been working with a lot of our community partners to plan ahead and access those community partners to do things like come in and add to the professional development that we're providing for our staff. But also when we find situations where students and their families need additional mental health supports, we'll be ready to make those connections for those families with the community partners so that they can access those services. Our counselors and mental health providers will be prepared to proactively work with students from the very beginning of the school year, using a trauma-informed lens and helping staff in their buildings to also work with students in a trauma-informed manner.
And Nancy, this is a little different from the mental health support and student engagement. I just thought about this. I want to thank you for reaching out to our partners at Kaiser Permanente. And their partnership was stride to try to help expedite free testing. One of the many emails I had pertained to who pays for testing. And I know we'll get to human resources here in a little bit and they'll, and Amanda and some of her other staff will talk a little bit about those things. But again, thanks for continuing. But again, thanks for continuing to bridge that gap and offer opportunities so that we can quickly get the testing done. If some of our folks are presumed positive and those results can get to Tri-County, we can thus get feedback from Tri-County in terms of what to do regarding isolation, what to do regarding having to quarantine a staff member or student member. So, again, thanks for that, do appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker.
Oh, and the grant we did receive lately, how's that going to improve the mental health and support offerings for our students and staff?
Thank you for that question. We just received a grant, a three-year grant from Kaiser Permanente that will fund an FTE that will work specifically with the strategic plan related to social emotional learning. And we know that a lot of what we're doing at the very beginning of this year is really focused on trauma and anxiety related to re-entering school. At the same time, we are working very hard on our action plan through the strategic plan regarding the social emotional learning and health and safety supports for kids.
Okay, very good. Speaking of the strategic plan, that certainly has been our guiding light in terms of how we looked at reopening, how we're looking at educating students. I'm going to ask our chief academic officer, Mrs. Marlena Gross-Taylor, to talk, one, about e-learning. We've heard quite a bit about that. Our principals expressed to me today their desire to have additional PD around e-learning, particularly at the building level. I would like for Marlena to talk a little bit about that and then talk about how our strategic plan plays in this age of COVID.
Hello, directors. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So, for our strategic plan, I'll start there. That is our guiding light in everything that we do. And so, even with COVID, even as we talk about instruction, resources, equity, we have been going back to that plan to help guide our actions. So, COVID has just probably speeded up the timeline for some of those things in our phases. If you remember, directors, that we've had, we're probably speeding up certain pieces of that timeline of those phases to react to our current situation. But it is our guiding light as to what we do. When we think about the strategic plan around aligned curriculum with flexible delivery methods, that's exactly what we're having to do right now, even as we think about how we go into the next school year. So, on the twenty-third, I provided and had so many of our, our, our teams come in and help talk about all the different aspects of e-learning as well as in-person. But one of the things that I want to stress is that we had already started the work before COVID of coming up with not only a scope and sequence, but really bringing our, our curriculum councils together that's headed up by our teachers to start figuring out with our new standards. What do we need to do? How do we need to organize those standards that make sense? And that work had been going on prior to us having to break for COVID. So, we don't want to lose that momentum. If anything, much of that work was completed and we want to have the opportunity to help bring those curriculum councils back, even virtually, to help prioritize what are those key standards that we want to make sure students learned in the spring? And if they didn't, how do we, how do we go back and make sure that they learn those standards? How do we assess those gaps that we know exists from being out? And then how do we put all of that together and streamline our standards? So, we're not overwhelming our students nor ourselves as educators, as teachers and leaders in this process. So, we want to make sure we, we provide those pieces. Also, in our strategic plan, we talked about having, having a model led, led by our schools of having that PLC model and what that looks like. And so, those action teams, again, were coming together and they have been still working even through this period because it's going to be imperative that we have, we follow that PLC model. We have PD that's not only provided by the district, but embedded in the school day and provided by the school with clear structures, clear outcomes. So, our teachers and our students continue to progress. When we think about the instruction that I mentioned on the twenty-third, let's talk about the in-person for a second. We need to, we have been working towards making sure our teachers have resources that are updated, that have a digital component as well, not ever thinking about a COVID would ever happen. But we know that as we try to, try to incorporate technology into our instruction and speak the language of our, our Gen Z ears, the technology integration is a key piece. We want to make sure that even as we come back in person, that we don't lose some of those things that we learned that worked really well during COVID and remote learning and in-person. We want to make sure that not only are our kids getting wonderful instruction in person, but that we're still blending the instructional pieces and resources there. And then if we do have to have a classroom or a school that has to go remote because they were exposed or whatever that might be, we don't want it to be a break into the learning. We want to still keep it going and it's important that our, our students and our teachers have the PD that they need, our teachers have the PD that they need. So, the instruction can happen and the practice of using those online tools can happen in the in-person setting.
Okay.
Now.
And Marlena.
Go ahead.
Can you talk about what, how can we help lead the efforts with e-learning at our building level? If you can talk about that briefly, please.
Sure. So, when we think about our e-learning, we said it would be more robust. And largely, that's going to be, we have structure. We're going to provide PD to give, to give our teachers the pedagogy, the best practice, the structure, the schedules, the attendance, all of those little pieces that we did not have in remote learning. We want to be able to provide that. Also, we want to make sure that we have a core curriculum for the online, the e-learning piece. So, we're not pulling from different, from different resources for those families that choose to be online one hundred percent for the year. We want to make sure that we have a schedule just for those, just for those students that are choosing to, to do that and their teachers, that we're still able to meet their, the students' needs. We're having other opportunities than just the synchronous, but we absolutely will have the daily synchronous learning there with our students. We're, we're going to have a schedule that makes sense. So, our, our families know upfront what they're signing up for, if you will. They know what the expectations are around the e-learning, the hundred percent e-learning. And I think most importantly, and I mentioned this on the twenty-third, it is incredibly unfair to expect a teacher to teach in-person all day and then, I don't know, when they would do it outside of after hours, teach the students that are choosing to be online one hundred percent. So, we're going to work with our schools to help them identify staff to teach those students that are online out of their homeschools, where we are helping to ensure it's consistent. All of our students have access to not only the platform and devices and technology, working with Goddham and the IT department, but also the curriculum content that's available. We're going to use those CARES monies to help purchase that if need be. So, our e-learning, our hundred percent virtual for the year will be what it should be, what it needs to be.
And Marlena, last question here related to that. Who's going to lead the PD, will it be joint PD in helping our building staff get this e-learning up and running in the buildings?
So, because we have very limited staff now, especially after the budget cuts, it's going to be imperative that we consolidate all of our resources. So, we're going to pool our PLSs. We're going to, we already took an inventory of teachers at the end of remote learning, who were Google certified, who were, who have been working with Canvas, so they can help lead the PD. So, Erica Mason, our Director of Curriculum and PD, along with a couple of others from the teaching and learning teams, will be working with those groups. So, each school has that individual or that group of core people that will help lead that work. We've also talked about using some CARES funding to help provide additional staff to help us as well lead that e-learning. So, even though each school might be, is offering the e-learning, we are consistent in our common practices and framework around that.
Very good, thank you. And now, we're going to switch gears and go over to our friends in human resources. Mrs. Thompson, are you available? Really, if you can spend some time talking about what accommodations and the accommodation process under COVID and ADA guidelines? And when we, I know our principals are very anxious to find out which staff have asked for accommodations and which staff members who will be approved. Can you talk a little bit about that, Amanda, and anyone else in your department?
Absolutely, thank you for this opportunity. Just want to go over some of the items on this slide as well, just to build some background foundation and then we can go into a little bit more detail on that process, which involves important collaboration across the system. So, in terms of accommodations processes under COVID and ADA guidelines, we have two buckets of individuals. So, we have individuals who say that they have an underlying health condition or they qualify under some of the COVID descriptors. For those individuals, we have prior and will continue to send information to DLT, so our principals and other department leaders, and directly recently sent it to our all-employees group so that they are aware of an application process. It's a form that they fill out and it's really important that we go through the interactive process with our employees and their supervisors so that we can review what the needs are and we can assess the, if there's a medical need associated with it. Are we talking about a change in placement or location for people such as online? They may need some additional equipment or other accommodations in terms of their being able to do their job in person. And so, we really spend time having these conversations with all of these individuals to determine if we are able to accommodate them. Part of this process also includes working with the teaching and learning side along the lines of how many positions they have available for online teaching at buildings or in that online e-learning opportunity that Ms. Gross-Taylor just shared. And if there are any additional positions that we need to hire into, so we're working with finance to see if there are additional positions we can post and hire into under CARES dollars as well. Paired with that process, knowing that this could create some domino effect of vacancies in different places, we have a survey out to our subs as we speak to inquire of their ability to work in-person and/or online, paired with some return assessments, much like all of our employees had to do to prepare them for this environment. And then also, we have a current posting out there for our subs to gather new subs into our system as well. As an even third layer, for example, I'm one who has a teaching license as well. So, looking at additional layers of individuals who could go in and support in a, in an emergency vacate position. So, those are some pieces. I know there's been some conversation about individuals who have said they don't feel comfortable returning and there may or may not be a particular medical reason for that. Please, please know that in HR, we are here to serve and support and we are going to do as much as we can to work with our employees and find, provide opportunities for them within the guidelines and the positions that we have available. So, just know that we will work through each and every individual process, knowing that no two situations are the same. Know that part of this is also working with our DOS very closely. So, you can see there's a cross-departmental approach. In terms of employee rights under, if they need to take leave under COVID, who have experienced COVID, there is information on our website. We've sent it out to staff in spring and I will work with communications in an upcoming communication to resend that out in terms of various paid leave entitlements, whether it's directly impacted to their health, the health of a family member, daycare needs or so forth. So, there's pieces and rights of our employees we want to make sure that they're aware of and that our employees know that we will work with them through all of these processes with our benefits office as well. Dr. Tucker?
Thank you very much, Amanda. You mentioned DOS. Our executive directors of schools have done an amazing job
Yes.
in this area, so certainly want to thank them and honor them for their work. I know Cory, I think Cory is still on and Danny, I know Danelle saw her earlier. DOS, do any of you want to add anything to this conversation as we look at the overall plan?
Okay. And Dr. Tucker, I do want to say thank you as well to our DOS. They have been, you know, communication is crucial and we can't silo in this process. And so, they have been a huge support to our employee relations directors and our legal team as well in helping us work through each and every situation, along with our principals.
Oh, absolutely. Any comments from DOS?
Dr. Tucker, I would just want to add that we will, as a, as a school leadership team, continue to work collaboratively with the other departments as questions and wonderings and concerns arise and we take this step by step. It is absolutely a team effort and appreciate the collaborative spirit that we have as a district leadership team to be able to problem solve and work through some of the unknowns moving forward.
Thank you.
I think to continue to partner on that as well too, I think it's continued to be that conduit within the system, I think is just so important for us to make sure that all perspective is being brought to the table as we're developing this plan to ensure there is that voice of balancing the conceptual side of things to the details of what we're hammering down to as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to echo, I think our next steps are helping to organize and prioritize the most urgent next steps. I think as we start to listen to where principals are, where teachers are, where the anxiety and how we can help detail that process and answer questions and quickly move to, to bridge those gaps and to again coordinate with all the different departments and assist in those, I know is a very important task. So, it's been, it's been a good start this, this past week and, and hope to dive in deeper.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, Director Ray?
All right, thank you, thank you, thank you. Want to just applaud the efforts. You know, again, just so many details that need to be considered and, and as always, we're so impressed with the commitment and the dedication of our staff, the leadership. And, and as Amanda said, you know, there's the, the spirit of working together on this. I do want to make a couple of clarifications and I'll open up to directors for questions. I think Thomas, on the slide that talked about dates, that slide needs to be updated because I think you made some changes just recently in terms of the startup times. So, I believe it's the seventh and the tenth and the eleventh that our staff development days and then the first day of school is the twelfth, not the tenth. So, that was a recent change-up, I think, based on your conversation with, with principals today.
Yeah. Director Ray, you're, you are exactly, you're ahead of me. I was going to cover that in the next steps, but thank you for that.
All right, all right. So, so I'm just going to cut to the chase a little bit because we've heard great words and great plans and great intents. What, what's haunting me at this moment, to be honest, is we have twenty-one days before August twelfth. And we have three days, three teacher contact days before the first day of school on August twelfth. I, I've got to be honest with you and tell you, I love the, the optimistic spirit, but I don't think that's enough time to do everything that is intended, that you're intending to do. I'll just be very bluntly honest. I think, Thomas, Dr. Tucker, we have just been flooded with emails of questions from, from employees. I know today, after your principal meeting, there were multiple pages of questions. And I'm, I, I just got to cut to the chase a little bit and say, I have, I'm having anxiety right now because I don't think we can be ready by the twelfth and I don't think our staff can be ready. And I, and I think we're doing a major disservice if we are saying to them, and we're going to give you three professional development days and boom, here we go. I just, I, I think that is not fair to our students. I just, I, I think that is not fair to our staff. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna react that way because I'm really, I'm really having a difficult time putting myself in an employee's shoes right now, and all the questions that have been left unanswered. And, and you know, we're going to open up to questions, but I'll tell you, we have 200, at least 200, 300 questions that I don't know the answers to that have come through board directors' mail right now. So I guess what I really need to understand, Dr. Tucker, is, is there some flexibility? Provide staff more front-end time to put into play practices and procedures, not just professional development and being trained, they actually have to work together to figure out how to put these practices in place. So I'm just going to lead off with this and just say I'm really, that's my angst right now, and I apologize to the other directors. I don't mean to throw a bomb out there, but it's just, it's really on my mind right now. I can't get over that and really start thinking about other questions because I think we are shortchanging the prep time to be ready for kids. So, Dr. Tucker, if you want to respond to that, I see Director.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Again, when we talked about this process, we talked about this process being fluid. We talked about the importance of having some scientific, medical-based information in helping to inform our decision. We've talked about having conversations. When I get to the next steps, we've talked about having additional conversations in town hall meetings. As I said, when this meeting started, this is not the beginning. I had a conversation with several of our principals before I began, came in to start this meeting. This is a conversation, a community conversation about doing what is best for our community. And this certainly is modeling what our intentions are. We need to be fluid. We need to be flexible in improving and saving the lives of our kids. So this is our, again, this is the, the first thoughts that we have here. This is what also what our committee recommended, our task force committees recommended a couple weeks ago. Now, this may even change next week, and I know our principals want some definitive things in how our building leaders, our principals, our teacher support staff get that we give them time to get there. So not, you know, not having the ability to be flexible is not, not what this plan here is about. I do certainly respect what you're saying, Director Ray, and I'm sure all of our other directors will have some input as well.
And, and if I'll just say, the respect is mutual, and there is never a question in my mind that there is focus on what's best for kids. I will, I will just say that front, you will never have to defend any actions based on that because I know all our employees, that's what they're focused on. As a board, though, we need to make sure we're supporting our employees to feel confident about their return. And the fear that we're hearing, I don't see that confidence right now. And I know that you're right, there's tons of flexibility, but we've also got 20 days. If we start counting the days starting tomorrow, we have 20 days to get this done. And I, I just got to tell you, I'm very concerned. I don't want to do this in a rushed manner. I want us to do it well so that our students and staff are safe. So I'll just put that out there, and, and I totally agree that everybody's intent is in the right place.
Well, and I, I want to emphasize again, this is flexible. We're flexible on our, on our dates. And when these task force groups were formed, that was one of the key principles, one of the guiding principles, was being flexible. In fact, we could start school in person today and next week, have to go quickly as we did in the fall. So no one has to really, you know, apologize about, you know, expressing that we need additional time. Again, I want to make sure that I honor the recommendation of our task force with their intent of making sure that we're flexible and that we can change the start dates.
Director Chantesh Shor, I saw your hand up. And then, directors, I think we'll go down the dais and just reactions and/or questions. Go ahead, Director Chantesh Shor.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to also say that what I really appreciate so much is the fact that our school district puts together their thinking, and they put together their best thinking, they bring it out, they put it in front of a lot of people, including us, and are willing to hear our thinking and change things up if at all discussed and agreed upon. So I really do appreciate that so much. I also want to say that I know that the things that have been on our school district's mind as well as ours, and probably everyone's losing as much sleep as we are, is that everyone is, is responsible as educators to assure the safety of our kids and our teachers. We're morally and legally responsible for the things that happened to the 68,000 kids and the 8,000, 9,000 employees that we have. And, and that just weighs so heavily on our, on our shoulders, and, and that would be Dr. Tucker and team and the board as well. When I think about this, and I, I obviously have some deep thinking about it and have spent a great deal of time, in the best case scenarios, that the CDC guidelines, which I saw that were taken into consideration along with all of the acronyms, CD, PHC, CDC, AAP, all of those kinds of acronyms taken into consideration, there are, are shield and take care of the vulnerable, reduce the risk, keep the virus out, wear face masks. You know what they all are, they've been listed, I think there's seven to nine of those things. And all of the things that were presented to us had some of that in consideration along with the other guidelines. And knowing that implementing something like this is really necessary and important and has to be done with fidelity. We know that if, if new implementations in schools are not done with fidelity, they fail. And the only way to assure fidelity is to assure the people on the dance floor are dancing with the people that have made the decisions. So I, in order to implement things with fidelity, that requires staff development time, that requires opportunity for staff to have conversations, requires opportunity for staff to have conversations with parents. If I'm a sitting principal, I know exactly the steps I take. I've mapped them out in my head. I've also mapped out how much time that would take. I also look at how much time we would have to give back to the state of Colorado if we're going to do what I'm asking to do. Because I know exactly how much time we're supposed to have with kids, and I know exactly how to get it, just like you do. So I've been thinking through this really with great detail. So this is not exactly the way I want to, I want to have discussion with the board about. I would like to ask for us to think about, and, and for the considerable circumstances changing all the time, a delay in school opening. From August 10th, what I really like to ask for is till after Labor Day, but I'd like the board to help me with the timing, from August 10th to at least August 24th. Teachers returning on time, principals and teachers having time to look at all the work you guys have already done, and the thousands of people who have already done task force work, and then figure out exactly how. And then they talk to the parents, and the parents help because, community, we cannot do this without community involvement and community support. It's Herculean to be an educator in this, in 2000s. It's, it's Herculean. And so I'm begging our community to understand the task this is for schools to take on, and I'm begging for our board and our district to consider moving back our timeline to the very least August 24th, but possibly September 7th. I could say more, but I'll stop. David, you're muted.
You saw me talking with my hands, though, right? So Director Chantesh Shor, thank you. We're going to, you're putting ideas on the table, that's great. Director Graziano, I'm going to come to you next. Let's go down the dais, reactions and/or questions regarding what we've heard tonight.
My reactions are, I'm thankful for the incredible amount of knowledge that was shared throughout the, the presentations, the amount of effort that was put forward to pull this all together, the outside help, the guidance, all of the words we've received. So for that, again, I think, Dr. Tucker, you've done, and staff, done an amazing job in that, in that sense. My feeling is, you know, I'm going to disagree a little with Director Ray and Director Chantesh Shor, primarily because I, I feel like what's being proposed is a very legitimate, very sound course of action. And I think, you know, stasis, I guess in my view at this point is, there's so many great unknowns, there's, there's no cookie cutter, exact, perfect answer we're going to get. And I don't think waiting longer necessarily would bias that because tomorrow or next, the following week, something could, will evolve or could evolve. So, you know, I think, I don't know, my, my gut is, I'm, I'm comfortable with what Dr. Tucker and staff have pulled together. They've spent a lot of time to do that. I just, I don't see the, the need to wait. I mean, if we were to wait, I could see maybe a few days, but to, for another a month or several, that long, I, I just don't think, that'd be something, the route I think we need to take. We have a course of action, let's set out and try and accomplish it. We have four, you know, nine, I don't know how many, David, you said the exact days we've talked about this, 19 days or whatever it is. I think, again, I, the analogy I keep going back to is this, we have, we have a fat, we have a blank canvas, we have, here's some ideas Dr. Tucker and team have pulled together. Let our building leaders, let the people in the field, the principals pull together and work their magic as they would into their, in their buildings. There's not going to be, waiting another few weeks is not going to, I don't think really adds to it. I think they're going to execute on it. It's just going to, I think, putting them to, to, to it sooner. So I, I would, I would support that or what's been proposed.
Thank you, Director Graziano. Director Hanson?
I have hundreds of questions, President Ray. I have hundreds of questions as a mom of three students in our schools, and I have hundreds of questions as a director who owes our staff some answers. And I'm not sure exactly how to wrap that into a single statement, but I think the easiest way to start is just that while I appreciate the flexibility that we have had to operate with up until this point, and the necessity for our plans to be fluid, we are at a point where parents need to have an exact understanding of what their child's day is going to look like in one of our buildings. And we need to know exactly what the e-learning option entails and what that looks like because we need to make the choice about where our children, how our children are going to learn this year, and from there, the pieces can be filled in for allocating staff, the, the teachers, the principals. It is critical that they have a very clear idea of how all of these big picture ideas actually come together and work in their day-to-day lives. And we have to move past the fluid and the flexibility, and we have to dig into the details, and we need to do it yesterday because if we are going to open schools on time, it simply is impossible without the very specific information to all of our stakeholders. Do you want me to keep asking my hundreds of questions?
No, they may be muted again.
I'm sorry. Director Holtzman, I was sitting there saying, you need to unmute.
Sorry, I wasn't sure where I was in the order of the.
Sorry, my, my apologies.
Yeah, no problem. Um, yeah, so I wasn't really expecting to have this time. So I'm always much more comfortable when I have just time to make a statement if I'm, if I have it written out and I'm completely prepared, but I'm just going to speak from my heart. And, Dr. Tucker, I know that your heart is for kids, and I know that that goes for our staff. And when you make these recommendations, I know, I have confidence that you bring them to us because you understand that we have students who depend on us, they depend on our staff, they depend on sometimes even just having a stable building to go to. We have students who don't even have that when they leave our building. And we have students that have many needs that I, that we could all describe, but some who need to be in person in school more than others, and some that don't have the ability because of family situation or circumstance to really get what they need, even in a large percentage from in-person learning. So all that to be, or from remote learning. So all that to be said, I really do understand how important it is for all of our students really to be in person, but knowing that some of them will have choices that others won't if they feel like our in-person situation isn't, isn't set up in a way that they're comfortable, some of our students just need it. So I, I really do understand that urgency of meeting the needs of all of our students, and especially those who have the highest need, and I just needed to lead with that. And then I guess from there, I would just say, I appreciate the work of the task force. I appreciate the time we took to listen to so many voices, and I appreciate that people are still reaching out to us now. However, I think, you know, we just haven't moved past the task force far enough. I had the privilege of being able to listen to some of our meetings earlier this week as we really, as we really began moving past the task force, is what it sounded like. I could be wrong. But, you know, the leadership of our, our staff in the meetings I was able to attend, it really felt like we were moving in the right direction, a lot of specific questions being asked and problems solved and solutions found. And I just think that more of that needs to happen so that we do have more specifics, and I am confident that when we have them, we're going to have a better comfort level about being able to provide that opportunity for in-person, for, for our students, as well as always, having that remote-only option. So I guess, I guess I'm a little bit non-committal if what we're talking about is moving back the start date. I mean, I guess, you know, in my heart, I would prefer that we not have to do that, but I'm not completely confident that we can get all the work that needs to be done, done within the time. So I probably need to hear more about that. I'm hearing from a couple of my colleagues who are master educators and who have been in the role of principal, who really feel like we need more time. And, and from the details of the plan that I've seen so far, you know, I have a question, a lot of questions about who is actually going to do things, and a lot of times it seems like it's going to be the principals. So I'll just leave it at that for now, but I do have hundreds of questions also, which might be helpful as we move forward in whatever timeframe we move forward.
Okay, very good. I will add, as we go down the dais, that tomorrow, we will be sending out a plan communicating to our families. A question there in regards to, do they prefer in-person learning or e-learning choices for the 2020, 2021 school year, along with transportation needs? Again, things are continuing to change. And I'll, I'll add this. We, we have to be, in this situation, we have to be very, very flexible in understanding and balancing what you just talked about, Director Holtzman, in meeting the needs of our parents and our community in getting our students. In meeting the needs of our parents in our community and getting our students back to school. And as I said earlier. You know, I have an obligation here to look at these recommendations from. Over two thousand plus folks here in this community that the board has direct directed us to do, and it just, again, it 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 says a lot about. How actively involved our community is and honor what they say. And I really appreciate uh, the ability to uh, to adapt. Uh, we're gonna be ready to offer uh, a fully uh, e uh, e-learning opportunity, uh, we talked with Doss. Uh, Mr. Wise uh, has been in contact with folks uh, with the Florida Virtual Academy in the event. That um, you know, we don't have enough teachers of our, there's spaces at issue. If a large number of students select the e-learning uh, platform. Based upon uh, the research that we s- we have, the survey research, I should say, ninety percent. Uh, of our parents uh, said that that's something that they didn't want. And so it starts, the the real work uh, directors start when we. Hear from parents exactly whether they want a again, sampling them again. In person based upon what you've heard tonight, and all this is methodical, and then I would, again, I have appreciated. The hundreds of emails and calls I've gotten because I would much rather be in a community where folks are actively involved. And want the best for their kids than not. But please continue to reach out to me, call me, everyone on the planet has my mobile number, uh, call me and email me uh, as we try to make the best choices. Uh, for our students, and again, it was methodical to have this conversation tonight, get the latest. Uh, health information, not from the superintendent, but from uh, Doctor Douglas and Lisa Cantor, so. I appreciate your comments, Director Holtzman.
Doctor Tucker.
Yes.
May I just respond quickly, with all due respect, a survey to parents tomorrow will provide. Worthless information to the district because. As a parent. Who likely has more information than a significant number of our families, I can't decide what I am going to do for my own children at this point because. The details of how this is implemented and what this looks like has not been provided, so. I'm not, I'm really, really uncertain and concerned about. Moving forward based on a parent's survey with the information that we have right now.
Yeah, and that's really not all, and I certainly appreciate uh, your passion and your concerns, uh, Director Hanson. This is not the first time we've surveyed uh, parents to get an understanding of what we have, again. We spent several weeks in conversations with focus groups. And community members and having conversations about. What delivery platform they wanted for their students. But when we get to the next steps and talking about going forward, uh, not only is it a survey tomorrow, but also. Our communications department has set up town hall meetings. With our community, and we also uh, as as always encourage our our board. Uh, for your full participation, and you certainly uh, provide that, but. It's not, this survey tomorrow is not the beginning. It's a a continuous process. Of collecting information, collecting data, and also hearing from our students. In terms of what's gonna be the best for them, so it's it's a it's a beginning in terms of how we deliver uh, e-learning, again, when we surveyed. Um, our, the survey had officially surveyed closed on. June twenty-second, I believe, uh, survey came out, uh, Matt Reynolds analyzed the data, uh, Matt, I. I know that you're still with us, can you give us a a quick overview of the data we received?
So Doctor Tucker, while Matt is doing that, let's go ahead and go to Director Long for for questions or reaction, then. Once we get through the dais, then let's come back and maybe have staff re- respond and we'll.
Good enough.
Add on the wait list uh, to respond about the survey, Director Long, go ahead.
Well, I I was so honored to attend the re-entry task force implementations team um, all days meeting last week. Um, I I generously was very impressed with everybody, some professionalism and the thoughtful deliberations, um. And I I want everyone to know that um. The administrations, the cabinets, and all the people involved. They love the school district, they love the kid, and they love, you know, our staff, okay, and I I just want able to be fair. To all of them that. Everybody just wants to do the best for the school district, no matter. What you think their decision is, okay, and and for that, I want to thank you for all your hard work, including Dr. Tucker's, um. Uh, this is unprecedented time, okay, um. Wall Street Journal said that the remote learning um, was a failure in in the editorial. And um, chop it. Um, last month also raised a lot of questions about, you know, the effectiveness of remote learning. And and I heard a lot of parents, you know, complaining about um, the kid need to be with the kid, so I understand the urgency. Of getting back um, to school uh, for a lot of a lot of reason. And at the same time, there's so much uncertainty about the coronavirus. And um, Kaiser has a survey four days ago. And said that one point five billion, which is around twenty-five percent of our teacher. Could have a serious uh, consequence, you know, if they get coronavirus. And USA Today have a survey in May who said that. Ten percent of our teacher may not come back if um, we need to open school. So so there's a competing interest out there. Um, a- as we see from the email that we get, um, that truly we've had in a lot of, you know, concern. I I mean. We seems to be in a loose loose situations either way that we pick what to do. And um. I I I feel personally that. Um, the safety of our staff. Is a high concern to me. And um. The uncertainty and the recent uptake of the coronavirus case. It's also worrying me because. We are not actually threatening the curve right now, it seems to be getting back a little bit uptake in the state of Colorado. Um, so I urge cautious. Um, to be opening the school. I think we need to go back. To classes, but at the same time. I do not feel that we need to be the first one to do that. Um, we have been have two months of uh, remote learning, so we have experience experience about remote learning. So I I'm just wondering whether it is. The best if we start school. And have remote learning first. And then going back to have in-person learning after Labor Day. So the reason why I'm suggesting that is that. Um, so we can have a a couple more weeks to observe. How the other metro school district done and learn from their mistake, um, and also. It gives a principal, our teacher, more time to prepare for the eventually going back to the classroom. And also, um, by looking at. The trend of the coronavirus. Give it a little bit more time to look at whether the recent uptake globally. Is going to continues or is going to level down, um. Again, um, and and all and and but I also understand that a lot of parents have the anxiety about, you know, online learning. Because, I mean, I quite honestly. The last two months of the school district. I I think a lot of people have complaining about um, that. Um, but I think this time around, we uh, prepare better than the last two months. So that's my thought of going forward is start slow, online, and then eventually move. Um. That is the fault of why, oh, I have one.
Right, thank you, Director Long, Director Meek.
Thank you, um, you know, I think what makes this so hard is the choices are high stakes. And there's just so much uncertainty right now, uh, we're not really talking about adding a new curriculum, we're talking about health and safety. Of our kids and our staff and everything. Um, so for me, I think it really is just making sure that we are fully prepared when we do start back. We have protocols in place, we have procedures in place, people understand and they're trained, um. I feel like there's so many details that are just not in front of us right now. Um, it's clear as you call on different staff members to kind of weigh in, there's so much thinking that's gone into this. But the plan really isn't. In one place quite yet, and I think that's my concern that Director Hanson brought up about communicating to. Families even, I'm not sure what we're communicating, like. It's, we don't have all the details in there, like what does e-learning look like? I think so many of those details are compiled, but they're just not ready to be shared out yet, or at least we haven't seen those. Um, a- and I just think there are details that aren't pulled together yet either, um. My big concern is that principals, teachers, and staff need time to process and plan. They need time to look at it, they need time to look at their buildings, and um. I don't, I've heard over and over, we want to involve the students, which is great, and we want to reach out to parents, I haven't heard a lot about incorporating teacher voice. And having teachers, you know, be part of that process as well, and um. We just need to do it right, we're we're talking about launching, and. If we start that process and our principals tell us and our teachers tell us, nope, we're good, we can do it and start. You know, August, what is it, twelfth now, um, if if they say they're good. They feel prepared, then I'm very comfortable with that, but without making sure that everyone is prepared and comfortable. Um, I just feel like it's too high stakes to move forward that quickly.
Director Ray, I I have to um. Make a quick statement here. Um, I certainly um. I'm I'm proud to, you know, work here in the district and 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 work with a group of leaders. Who are just ensuring that we're turning over every stone to bring our kids back. And, you know, we, and we're operating off science. You know, we've had Doctor Douglas here, he's given us his recommendation. And, you know, we've had over two thousand people, when you count folks who were not on this committee. Given us advice on how we should return to school, and on those committees, we had teachers. There were teachers uh, on the, on those committees who did provide input. And and I'll ask our people to please take some time to go back to. Our framework, and you'll click and see who was a member of each one of those committees, and so. I want to make sure that our board doesn't leave here to tonight thinking. That we've not captured voices of our entire school community. Uh, in order to figure out. Uh. How this exact e-learning plan is gonna be, we have folks. Who have been working hard, our Doss have been working hard, uh, CIPG have been working hard to get these things here together. But the first step in this is that we have to survey. We have to survey to see who wants it, because that will let us know how many students to. Prepare for e-learning, and it also prepares us in the event, and it's probably a strong likelihood that. Many of you are alluding to that we'll have to return to uh, remote teaching and learning. And so I I don't, uh, you know, I I want to make sure that the board in our community. Understand that folks have been very thoughtful. And folks have done, our folks have done a yeoman's job. Of trying to capture the voice of everyone, not just students, not just staff, not just parents, but our entire community. And we wanted to mix this with the hard work of our school community and their voices with the voices of folks from the medical community. We're gonna get additional guidance from uh, CDE, hopefully tomorrow, Director Meek, as you mentioned, or the next week or two. And we're gonna get um, additional guidance from the CDC, but I will say to you all, in all of my contacts. There won't be any specificity at all, there won't be a magic time when to start school. What we do know, we're gonna have to start school at some point in time and in some way, and then I'll reiterate what I just said earlier. Uh, please understand that we value the voices of everybody in this district, and if anyone who feels like they have not. I'll take personal responsibility for that.
Thanks, Doctor Tucker, and again, I I don't think there's any question about.
Yeah.
The the opportunities that have been allowed for for voice, uh, again, you're absolutely right, there you, I mean, a two thousand member. Task force, I mean, it it's it's obvious that we value voice in our community, um, my question to you, Doctor Tucker, is though, twenty days. Can you, are you confident? That our staff and our building leaders can put things in place so that on August twelfth. Students enter into an in-person learning environment that is the desired vision that you presented here tonight, do you think that's enough time?
Based upon the work of the thousands of people that you mentioned. Based upon the recommendations of our folks. I think. Without a doubt, without a doubt, I should say, we can do it, but we were certainly welcome, we would welcome. An extension, wait uh, waiting until the twenty-fourth, I I'm fine with that, I had this conversation again with principals uh, during um. Our level meetings today, we are okay with this, we want the best for our folks. You know, we're okay starting uh, on the twelfth, we're okay starting on the twenty-fourth, we want to get started based upon the research we have, people. Who do this for a living, educators who do this for a living, uh, physicians. Uh, and the, when we talk about physicians, it's more than just Doctor Douglas, the entire uh, group of Denver metro area uh, health departments. Are recommending, that's why every district in the metro area, DPS, Jeffco, Aurora, Westminster, they're starting. With intentions of this month, we have no, we have no problems in uh, waiting till the twenty-fourth, this is a rec- this is a recommendation to the board. With flexibility, we want to all be on the same page and do what's right.
And then my my other question on to Chanta Shore uh, is, how do you respond to the number of? Of staff and employees who have communicated to us fear, panic. Um, you know, just and 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 again, the questions that go on and on and on. How how do you, how do we respond to those people to reassure them? That we have their best interest in place, cuz you're absolutely right, we have kids' best interest in place, but I think Director Meek uh, accentuated it well, is I don't know that we've really. Have said to a, to all our employees, or eighty-four hundred, do you want to come back or not, do you feel safe returning to work or not? I don't know that we've done that work, and so we're hearing a sampling of people who are absolutely terrified. About the consequences should they come back.
Let let me start with this, we are all afraid. I'm afraid. My children back in Ohio are afraid. And I've been doing this here for quite some time, I'm afraid, but what I do have, I have faith, and I have trust. That we're in this business here. To do what what's right by s- by staff, by children, by our entire school community. That's why we built in additional mental health opportunities for counseling. For testing, uh, for COVID testing, for uh, you know, the the trace testing that we we've talked, contact testing that we've talked about. We have built in every imaginable opportunity uh, for our, for our folks, and. You know, in 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 terms of involvement, and and again, I I'm gonna push back on that quite a bit. About, because I'm hearing an overtone that maybe teachers were not involved. The survey went out to everybody. Everyone, every teacher in our district had an opportunity to be involved. And to continuously provide feedback. I'm meeting with the union next week, uh, members of the uh, uh, union next week leadership. To find out what else we. to find out what else we can possibly do. Again, I, I think I probably said it twice now, that we're going to continue these conversations. This is not, this, the work of the task force isn't over. It's not like, okay, here's the, our recommendation board members, we're done, this is ongoing work. And I tried my very best, in, in, as a communications person, I tried my very best today and over the last couple of weeks to explain to our people that we want to hear you, we, we want to hear you, we want to collaborate with you. And I know, and I've said this even in this room, in the boardroom where I'm, I'm now, it's very difficult when we don't have a collective bargaining agreement because much of the stuff that we're talking about right now would have been answered in a collective bargaining agreement. But that's not our reality right now. And I know when you don't have that agreement, you got to work extra hard to build trust. Not only trust with our administrators, trust with our teachers, I recognize that.
Director Chanta Shore, go ahead.
Um, with, with respect to the work that has been done, because that has been lots and lots of work, reaching out to lots and lots of people. What I'm proposing isn't necessarily a proposal that that work hasn't been done because I want to assure everyone that I'm hearing that I don't know any other place that have done the background work that we've done so far in Douglas County. And additionally, Douglas County is a unique kind of environment for us to work in. But what I am saying is that we have to think about out of the box kind of scenarios and schools have to be given an opportunity to be thinking about operational implementation. So although they have not till this point, then even tomorrow, given a framework, which is, I, I would say a decent framework that I have seen to this point, but operational implementation is a next step. So in a next step and in an environment where you are working to assure that you have an opportunity to do lots of out of the box thinking, to think about spatology, to think about cohorts, to think about all the things that principals and teachers will think about. Because I know principals and teachers can fix, can make this safe and can make it work. But the operational implementation of it, they need the time to have those conversations and for each one of their schools. So with all respect for the work that happened previously, that's all super important and it had to come to this point. I'm saying then the next step is the step that I'm suggesting that we wait till the 24th so that we can give schools operational implementation time, at least the 24th. But I'm hearing that one seems to be kind of the catch, so I'll at least go to there. I'd like to see it just beyond, but willing to hear and listen to. Um, there is another point that is, um, so can we not forget that there's one other point to make before we go offline that isn't about this? It's about a different point in the, um, in the presentation.
Okay. Director Holtzman?
Yeah, so I feel like that we could be helpful and, and help Dr. Tucker and our staff by going ahead and asking questions about the information that they have presented to us so far tonight. Um, I don't want to ask all of our thousands of them, but there's a few things that moving forward, you know, I know that as only one board director, I will be recommending a change. And I think it would really be helpful to our families and to our students and to our staff if they could hear us, if we, if we do come to consensus about any direction that we could give about any parts of this, it will give them more information and more definition when they do respond to a survey that says, are you interested in remote learning, are you interested in in-person? Without us asking questions to help further define things, they're going to be lacking that information that they would gain. So I guess I would just ask that we, we still consider the timing, but that we go ahead and, and talk about and ask some questions about the material that was presented.
Okay, with that, other questions? Do you want Director Long and then Director Meek?
Well, I, I think that previously I have sent a doctor's email last Saturday and asked him to give me a rundown of what the other school district does. And I specifically interest in what is the opening day of the other metro school district? A day going to hybrid, in-person only or online? And because I think there's a good reference point for us to hear what the other school district does. And I, I, so that's my questions and I, I truly feel we should start slow. I don't want to repeat myself, but I would support, if we open with online and then go in person later, I would support Dr. Chantel Shaw's suggestions of moving the opening day later.
Director Meek?
So I just want to reiterate what Director Chanta Shore said about really it being about implementing the plan with fidelity. And it was very helpful to hear Dr. Douglas tonight and the presentation, making sure that we have testing addressed in the plan, protocols for what's expected in that area. There really were two areas I heard tonight, based on the presentation. I think masks need to be required for all with limited exceptions. And the other area is daily symptom checks being conducted at the school versus just being volun, you know, done at home. And those are two areas of the plan based on the conversation tonight that, that kind of are something that I'm looking at.
Very good. All right, any other, other questions? Director Holtzman and then Director Hanson?
Yeah, so for me, a couple of the important things I wanted to talk about that I saw in the recommendation tonight was as Director Meek mentioned, masks. And Dr. Tucker, I know that I've, I've communicated with you a couple of times about this. And I understand that the younger students, there's some science, there's some emerging, emerging research that Dr. Douglas talked about today that went into that recommendation. And I think also importantly, you were considering the developmentally appropriate expectations and management of masks and younger students. And so I do really appreciate those two things. What I have heard from our staff is a lot of them saying that they would feel more comfortable if those younger students were wearing masks. And you know, as a, as a preschool teacher, I know that they can do it. I, I have concerns, like I said, just about the expectations and the management, but I think we could probably make that happen if we only added that masks will be required and managed in a developmentally appropriate manner for students PK through, I think it's grade five. And, and, and that kind of also goes to the whole expectations of requiring masks. Just making sure that as we implement a plan that we're consistent across schools about how we do manage failure to wear a mask. You know, I'm assuming it'll be by a warning and education. And if there's repeated, repeated, repeated refusal, I would think that that student would be given an option for remote learning. But that's kind of a couple of things that I wanted to bring up.
Okay. In regards to the mask and discipline, I touched upon it earlier. We'll look at it, at least from now, from my perspective and comments I heard from some of the task force members. The mask would be treated like a dress code violation. And again, as I stated earlier, the intent is not to make this punitive, but to encourage our staff and our students to wear a mask. On the bus, they are 100% required to be worn on the bus regardless of grade level. Uh, we can continue, I understand your, your quest for K through five and mask. We can certainly, as we continue to talk with parents and getting the latest research out there, maybe the recommendation is full mask pre-K through five. Again, us being flexible. Director Long, you had asked a question and I, I think I addressed it earlier. I said every school district as of three days ago, I, I'm on the call with all the front range superintendents just about weekly. And they're all starting in-person learning. Aurora Public Schools, August 18th, Cherry Creek School District, August 17th, Denver Public Schools, August 17th, Greeley Evans School District, August 17th, Littleton Public Schools, August 13th, Jefferson County School District, the week of the 24th, Mapleton Public Schools, August 27th, and Westminster Public Schools, I think mid-August. Now this, again, this could change within the last couple of days, but this is the latest that I have. Also, Matt, you know, I, I have the data from our surveys. Can you briefly go over the data and the pertinent responses to questions that I don't know if our direct, all of our directors have, have seen? Certainly, we, we published it out there for community consumption, but I know we put so much stuff out there.
Good evening, Mr. Reynolds, go ahead.
Absolutely. Good, good evening, Dr. Tucker and Board of Directors. So we've had a variety of different surveys go out in our system right now and, and, you know, I, I know it can be confusing based on how many of them are out there. But we've had two surveys come out that the time coincided with the task force convening. And the idea of that survey was to really help provide some information for our task force in creating that recommendation. So win in tandem. And the question on that was really regarding two things. One is, given what, you know, people knew at the time and returning to as normal as possible for in, in-person learning in August, you know, do people, do staff and do parents believe that students should return to school? And both parents and staff, yes, that they believe that in person. And it kind of goes back to what Derek Fleishman said earlier, that, that, that people are really chomping at the bit to really get back to in-person learning. Uh, the next question that was asked was if a contingency plan were to become necessary, in other words, not the in-person, but if a contingency plan were to come in place as a result of a health order, the, both parents and staff chose options one and two, which is some variety of in-person learning. The third option, which is the E, 100% e-learning option, was between eight and 10% on those two groups of folks. So by and large, whether it's the normal starting place or with contingencies, the in-person is what was favored in both of those questions.
Mr. Reynolds, if I could just highlight though, on the staff question, it was that 62.25%, 62% said yes to in-person. 28, 29% said not sure, and almost 9% said no. So we've got about, so it's, it's really, we've got about a 40% of staff that have said not yet or not sure yet or no. Is that, am I reading the right data?
Yeah, and so you, you have that percentage of, of folks and the unknown, which I think I'm hearing from all of you, that there is a, a section of unknown for, for both, and, and parents also had a section of unknown. Uh, but the, the majority of them were, are choosing that in-person.
Thank you.
And while we, Ed and Matt, I'm going to go ahead and give the exact percentage for transportation. Mr. Cosgrove had made reference to the survey and he's actually right. It said, if you live within the current district transportation boundaries, do you plan to use district provided bus transportation for in-person learning options? 50%, about 51% said no. 51, no, 11.9% maybe, and 23.21% said yes.
Other questions or, and Dr. Tucker, I don't know if you had other responses?
That's technology, Mr. Seth has gone over that quite a bit. Let's look at the technology survey to participate in e-learning or a blended learning contingency option. Students need access to a computing device such as Windows PC, Mac, Chromebook, tablet, et cetera. Please choose one of the following of your students about access. My students has access to a device listed above, 86.87%. And I want to remind folks, we had 25,000 respondents to these surveys. My student does not have access to the device listed, 13.11%. Again, when you look at the survey responses, transportation, 25,000 parents. I mean, I, I go back again. I, I cannot really say thank you and, and almost hallelujah when you see the number of parents and staff members and students who take the time to fill out our surveys. Matt, what were your staff percentages when you looked at e-learning or in-person?
There we go. Now I'm, I'm back unmuted here. So looking at, for contingencies, using home internet, for staff, it's 99%. And for looking at actually the, the technology of having a computing device, it's 97.74%.
Okay, and we had 4,260 staff members to respond to, given what you know about DCSD's plan to return to an in-person, as normal as possible classroom experience with safety precautions this fall, do you believe the students should return to school in August? Given the uncertainty of what restrictions will be in place when the school restarts in August, specify safety precautions have not yet been determined. So 4,260 of our staff members filled out the survey. And 62.25% yes, 8.99% no, and 28.76% not sure. Again, it, it speaks to the uncertainty that exists out there.
Director Hanson, I know you were better up, so I didn't want to, I don't want to skip over you, go ahead.
For that, I just want to start off by saying I appreciate all of the efforts that have been made to connect with our community through surveys. But as we have said many times this evening, the information that we're working with changes on an almost daily basis and sometimes even more like hour to hour. So I would, I'm really hesitant to rely on the numbers in the initial surveys because while all of us want our kids to be back in a classroom until we really have a crystal clear idea of what that looks like, I'm not sure that a somewhat flippant, yes, put my kids in a classroom answer is something that we can really rely and plan around until those details have been provided. So the information that I think we are missing, which is critical for our community, both for teachers to decide what, what they are comfortable with and for our parents to decide what they are comfortable with, we need a much better understanding of what the two options are so that we can make a good choice. To my knowledge, the only information that has been shared about the e-learning platform is that it's going to be robust and comprehensive. I need really specific information about what curriculums we're going to be using. I need to know if it's going to be the same curriculum that the kids who are in-person learning are going to be using. It, what does a day look like? Is this going to be roll out of bed at noon and do your best to get all of your assignments done? Or is this going to be, you need to be in your seat logged in at 8:30 and these are the expectations? And on the same side, in-person learning has all of those same open-ended questions. And those answers are going to drive my decision as a parent. I, I want to know what happens to my child if he or she is exposed to COVID and has to stay at home for two weeks but is healthy. Do they dial in remotely to their, to their in-person classroom? Same for a teacher. What happens if a teacher is? Same for a teacher. What happens if a teacher is required to stay at home? Is that learning then going to transition to the teacher dialing in? I need that information to weigh my choice because if I understand it correctly, when we check that box of in-learning or in-person, we are committed for the entire year. And that is an enormous decision to ask our parents to make with such limited information available today.
Very good points, Director Hanson. There, there is, again, a much overused term that we've had tonight. There is flexibility when a student gets well from COVID that he or she can, for example, return back to the regular classroom or parents have checked off that box that they they are preferring in-person, remote learning. And if a kid is struggling, a student is struggling with in-person, we have the ability to allow that student at some point, preferably at a natural break, to resume in-person learning. So there, again, we're going to keep those contingencies in mind. And we want to do what we need to do to ensure our our teachers have the support that they need, our principals, and our our students have the options that they need as well.
Director Chanta Shore, and I saw Director Long's hand too. Director Chanta Shore, now you said there was a point in the presentation that you wanted to hear that didn't get presented. I I wanted to.
It's been presented now.
It's been presented, so you're good?
Yes.
Okay, Director Long? I'm sorry, did you have, you didn't, did you have your hand up, Director Long?
Yes.
All right.
I I just wanted to know, judging from, I I I'm, I know that the school district legally require to have a certain number of day of classes. So if we do decided to move the starting day back in August, how late can we start to fulfill the requirement of having the number of 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 day for for classes? And is taking out the fall break is an options? Know, knowing about, you know, the coronavirus, Europe has been banning the United States citizen job over there. So I I don't foresee a lot of people can go anywhere anytime soon. So is there options that we can explore so that we could give us a few more week by canceling, you know, the fall break as an options?
Well, please keep in mind and in my communication to the board, that's one of the biggest issues here in in the task force. Not, and and I own it too, but the task force recommending the start date because we knew once we got started in August, mid-August, kids would have three weeks of schooling roughly in August, three or four in October, and then they would go out for a week. Having that fall break was a huge consideration in our start. Many of the districts that I just mentioned here don't, they're starting on the seventeenth or the twenty-fourth. They don't have a fall break. So Director Long, that certainly is a consideration. We're going to ask Matt to talk more about this and and also the teaching and learning aspect of it. The later our kids get started, they're going to miss out on many of the things that our directors have talked about. I mean, our kids have not been in session with the exception of Mr. Fleishman's students, D.C. Oaks. They've not been in session since March. And so that certainly is another consideration. But to answer your question about hours and 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 attendance and and credits and so forth, I'm going to ask Matt Reynolds to to jump in. And what he and I have had a conversation about is looking at putting in a waiver for some of some of these contingencies as they relate to COVID nineteen. Mr. Reynolds?
Good evening. So Director Long, to to address your specific question, if we do make a change to the beginning start of the calendar, we we would have to respond and make additional changes to our calendar to make sure that we meet the minimum standards from the state. I do know that the state is re-examining some of those requirements for attendance and and the requirements for instructional minutes. Again, it's part of that package of of guidance that's going to be provided by the Colorado Department of Education over the next several weeks to let us know what what kind of specific requirements we have to do on the state reporting aspect of it. But we would follow whatever the guidelines are set forth by the Colorado Department of Education regarding the number of instructional hours and days.
All right, Director, so we're kind, we're at a late hour, and I I see Director Holtzman's hand, I'll honor that. But we need to provide Dr. Tucker direction in terms of where do we go from here? We we've hashed out our concerns, we've given feedback, we've asked questions. We know there's a ton of questions that are still out there. So I really would like us to move forward and giving some recommendations about what our next steps might be. Director Holtzman, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to follow up. I hadn't had a chance to ask any questions about remote learning yet. But I would, I am concerned. I I have heard that we don't want to have teachers that are doing remote learning and teaching in a classroom, but it sounds like that will all be left up to principals. And I know that we need to get some of this questionnaire information to be able to make determinations. But I guess I'm just wondering, you know, who is going to be responsible for coordinating this? And especially at the secondary level? You know, and I don't need answers now, but just for consideration of if if we're going to have any cooperation at all at the secondary level of teaching, maybe some of the higher level classes that there's not many students in. Is each high school going to try to manage that on their own? Are they going to cooperate? And if so, who's going to coordinate that? Is it all left up to principals or will there be some support for that? And that's just some of the questions I have. And I'll just leave it at that. That was my remote learning thing that I wanted to ask, so.
A quick ten-second response is Mrs. Gross Taylor stated that it'll be a joint effort with our building, building leaders as well as folks in curriculum CIPG as well. So we're, because we're so slim now, we have to work. We we have no other choice but to work more closely together. So it'll be a joint effort.
Okay, Director, and I'm just going to, I I know Director Graziano is frustrated over there because I I think frustration in terms of the time issue.
David, don't, David, just, just because I had a just different opinion doesn't mean I'm frustrated.
We're just talking. Let me, let me, let me qualify because I'm, when I try to figure out some consensus. So I I want to just honor you, Director Graziano, that you have reservations. I should have said it differently. I apologize. Reservations about changing the plan or changing the time. I'm I'm just trying to figure out if there's consensus with the board in terms of how we move forward. I'm trying to push us forward in terms of helping Dr. Tucker have some direction for next steps. And I apologize, Director Graziano. I didn't mean to put you in a bad light. I just, I want to honor that you have a different opinion, and I'm trying to find consensus. I I would also say, Dr. Tucker, just to hear Mr. Reynolds say, you know, CDE is not going to put their guidelines out for another couple of weeks. I mean, this is not, this is not our staff's fault. I mean, I I would tell you, I just, I get angry at the whole notion of we just continue to be asked to do these things without financial resources, without time. You know, it it's just, it's very frustrating to me that we are the victims of poor planning and and poor direction above us. I'm just going to say that because I don't want, I don't want this to be on staff. This is not, this is not reflective of you.
I concur with your frustration without having clear guidance when we need it from CDE. But I I have to say this, that in my conversation last week, the commissioner called me directly. She called me on my mobile phone, you know, the number that everyone has. So she calls me, and she was hopeful in what we heard from Dr. Douglas that these guidelines will come out soon. So Matt, I hope, hopefully, they're not in a couple of weeks that we get them as early as possible. But this also, David, you, again, you expressed it well. We're not the only district dealing with this frustration. These other, our other neighbors have to wait on guidance from CDE and from the law from the legal world, if you will, if you will, because we want to make sure that we're not operating out of compliance. But I I get your frustration.
So, so the, I guess there's, Director Meek, I I know I said Director Holtzman, and I saw her hand and Director Meek. So Director Holtzman, go ahead, and then Director Meek.
I mean, I'm just thinking with you, Director Ray, about ways to move forward. And I think, you know, I guess giving consensus. And and I will say that we passed a resolution in March that allows Dr. Tucker to set the calendar for the school year. So I I feel like I'd be remiss with that setting, saying that. At the same time, I really appreciate his willingness to cooperate, and he, I know he wants the support of the board. And so, so I understand. And and also am feeling that we could probably use some more time to really get more details out and be more specific. I think we've gotten some great suggestions just over the course of the past few days. And and I know that all of us as directors probably have many more that we will want to share. But all that to say, if we could maybe weigh in on on our recommendation about the calendar as well as having a check-in with the board, maybe two weeks or something so that, so that staff has more support and guidance at that time and so that we don't, we don't put, you know, I just, I feel like we need a check-in, that, you know, waiting a month or I don't even know when our next is. But having a check-in where they could bring us some of the things that we've asked about and maybe more that we need to ask later after the meeting would be helpful.
And I think that's what Mrs. Hyatt mentioned, this ongoing checking in with staff, ongoing checking in with principals in in regions. And again, I certainly appreciate you really articulating. What the the point is, I want to get feedback from the board about how are you filling with the calendar? I mean, I I I do appreciate us cabinet, DOS as a team, having the ability to change the calendar. But we want to make, we want to make sure the board represents our community. And we need to be in alignment as much as possible. We want to, we know that if our students are going to thrive, we need to make sure we take care of our teachers and we take care of our our community. So, you know, we're we're flexible. We want to, just want to know where the board is on where you are with the calendar, and then we'll make the changes.
Director Meek, and then I want us to get to a place of wrapping this up. Director Meek, go ahead.
Sure, I was also going to recommend that we do another check-in in a couple of weeks. But I think we've provided, you know, some feedback in some different areas. I think you've heard that we really want to make sure the implementation of the plan can move forward. And I think being able to go to the principals and the building administrators, you know, and have them work with their their teachers and staff on what does our pickup drop-off look like? Building entry, transitions through the day, our specials. I mean, I think we're going to get the kind of feedback we need to tweak the plan. I think you mentioned also having town halls, you know. So so I think we're doing something pretty major here with what we're trying to do with reopening the schools. But I've also heard, you know, we should go slow to go fast and make sure that we're prepared. And I'd love to hear feedback from the building administrators on what that should look like. Oh, and then the last thing is, there will be policies that we are going to need to update and revise and adopt. And I think having a meeting in a couple of weeks, we may be in a position to start that process so that those are in place and ready to go for the opening of the school year.
So Dr. Tucker, how do you feel about, I mean, so I think Director Meek has summed that up well in terms of the feedback you've received from the board. Are there still questions you have about where does the board collectively stand in terms of the plan? Hope you're on, you're on mute, Dr. Tucker.
Okay, I'm, I'm off. Mr. Shaleen has just unmuted me. Yeah, I I think the board has voiced its concerns and questions quite well. Certainly, a lot of guidance and and things we need to think about as we establish a very smooth opening, a smooth opening at all of our other campuses as they experienced the D.C. Oaks. So we have that. And tomorrow, we'll get a a letter out from me to the community and about the day we we want to restart. It looks like the twenty-fourth, but we need to build some other time. And we need to stop and think and ensure that if we're pushing this back, we need to make sure we're doing work. And I and I certainly would never want to speak for a board member, but I I think that's what Director Graziano is coming from. We need to, if we're going to push back further, we need to make sure that we're spending this time as a team, as a district, in answering those questions that the board, you've just mentioned quite well. So that is a plan in and of itself. So we will need to create some additional next steps leading up to the check-in.
All right, and and so, and then Dr. Tucker, I guess, in terms of starting at a different date, I probably, that probably needs to be a decision made pretty quick. And like Director Holtzman said, you have the authority to do that. We we gave that to you during this crisis time. But I would think, you know, setting that date and then working backwards. And certainly, for me, it's giving employees enough lead time. I, you know, I I would hate for us just to keep moving it down and not giving employees actual contracted time to to work together on this. So so that's the other issue, I think, in terms of calendars you're wondering.
And and the and the last thing, also considering parents, I know parents have already made made some adjustments and plans to the, for their return back to work, some of them. And so I I I think that certainly has to be a big part of of what we do and how expedient and how quickly, I should say, that we get this this out.
Well, very good. Again, I'm going to hold us off. I think we've got, we've gotten Director Tucker all the feedback he needs at this point. I think he understands the. There's just, there, there's a lot of questions. But again, I I can't emphasize enough how how proud we are of all the work that's been done thus far. And the moving targets are just unbelievable. And so just please know that we have such high regard for everything that's been done so far. But I think you also are clear about the things that we're concerned about and hope to resolve. I know we talked about a check-in board. We do have a July twenty-fifth work session already scheduled.
Be it.
And I'm wondering if that would be, and that's twelve days from today. So I'm wondering if that would be a sufficient time for us to do our check-in. We had other agenda items on that day, but it sounds like as we are continuing to navigate the re-entry that it might be good for us just to really get that done and focus on that only. And then we can do goal-setting and monitoring reports and all that other stuff that we had planned. We can do that at a later date. So I'm just going to check to see what your thoughts are, board, if that's soon enough for us to do the check-in with Dr. Tucker. Thoughts? Just wave at me, Director Chanta Shore.
I think that's soon enough. I think we should do it in person.
Fair enough, and I, yeah, we, you know, it depends on our facility, whether our facilities will allow for public access. And that's the reason why we did this remote today. So I would just say that we are waiting for the clearance for our facilities to be okay for us to have public enter. Director Graziano?
Well, if we're going to push this out to that period, can we at least establish what exactly we're going to be looking for at that time versus just getting together and then saying, well, these twelve things have now changed, and now we have a new set of things to think about? So to me, if we're going to push it out that time, what is it that we need to see addressed? What is it that we want to know at that point to give us reassurance that we're actually on the right track versus maybe we're way off base? So I think prior to that meeting, we need to have something in place to say, here's what we're looking for at that meeting.
So I'm actually going to reverse. So I'm actually going to reverse it a little bit, Dr. Tucker. And have you summarize what you think you heard tonight that the board needs to hear when we check in?
I think it needs to be first and foremost, a level of satisfaction from the board. And not just from the board, but also from us, because at the end of the day, it, it, it really starts with us. And so that we have, as we look at the next steps, that we have gone out and had the town hall meetings and that we have done the additional surveys, Facebook lives, other communication measures around the concerns that the board members have to make this more actionable. And it starts first and foremost by finding out what percentage of parents are going to choose for their students will choose e-learning or in, in-person learning. And so I, I certainly have that. I know Tammy Taylor's online and she's, she's captured everything here. So one, having some concrete ideas about what e-learning will look like in the Douglas County School District. How different, because we said very early, right after March, that when we came back in the fall, that in-person learning, if we were to go that route, would look a lot differently. Okay, we've approved our in-person plan. What, how's it going to look and how much time have you spent with your principals? Thus, your, your teachers in working out the logistics like scheduling, that's going to be huge. Ensuring we have the proper distance and hopefully, David, to your point, will have that supporting, we, we will have that supporting guidance from CDE. The guidance from the new guidance that Dr. Douglas referred to from the Centers for Disease Control. Those day-to-day things that I heard also Director Hanson mentioned as well, transportation. What does that look like? What does it look like when we're only transporting a little over a third of our students? And so more concrete type things, and I'll say this as well. I, I ran off the names of, of school districts that I'm very close with those superintendents. They are looking for that same, that, that same information as well. So I, I believe those are the most concrete things. And of course, that we continue to invite our teaching staff to take part in this. As I mentioned, Kelly DeValle, my assistant, has set up time with the union representation for DFT for me to have conversations with them, what are they hearing from teachers in the field as well? Again, honoring and valuing all voices. How was that?
That's, I think that's pretty, pretty right on, I think. And then I think, but the two big priority items is the start date. Are we saying August 24th is our start date?
I want to talk with Cabinet tomorrow because there are a lot of other contingencies we have to keep in mind. So I'll talk with Cabinet tomorrow and we'll bring EDOs in as they've been very helpful on the call as well.
And I think the other question is just the protective equip, you know, the PPE for, are we, are we having pre-K through five? Is it more than just encouraged? I think you heard some concerns there about whether or not we should expect them to wear those face coverings or not as well.
Very, very valid concerns. And again, within the next, you know, week or two, we'll have, I mean, of course, we'll have the decision made before then. But in the next week or so or two, we'll have additional guidance around that. Last point, I'm glad you mentioned that, Director Ray. The school district can go over and beyond the guidance from those bodies I mentioned as well.
Very good. And Director Holtzman and Director Lung and Chantre Shore, Director Holtzman.
I will be brief. I used the masks as an example. And what I, I think to make it even more clear is what I'm looking for is I love that you have identified the six ways that we can protect, hand hygiene, social distancing, I can't read my own writing, masks, screening cohorts and contact tracing. And, and, and you've, Dr. Douglas and Lisa Cantor and you have done a great job of talking about how those all things work together. And then it's, it's kind of impossible to do any one of them 100% of the time, 100% right. Even if we had the funds and the abilities and the buildings that were big enough, it would be impossible to always do them 100%. So I understand how they interact. I think for me, I would just say to you, the ones that we can do, like mask was one example. I would ask that we do them and we do it with students in mind, that it, we have developmentally appropriate expectations. But that's just an example of, I get how those six things fit together and, and just the ones that we can do closer to 100% or 100% in, in, would be by request as one board member.
Director Lung and then Director Chantre Shore.
Well, I, I mean, getting the staff to calm down is very important as Todd Ray mentioned. But I think I have not heard you mention about the principal, because I think, I think they have a long list of concern. And ultimately, they are the one who responsible for opening the school safely in, in their, in their building. So I, I, I don't know whether we should have a survey of the principal or are we to have a get-together?
Yes, Director Lung, thank you. I, I probably should have been clearer when I said I was on a level call. That's a call with all of our district leadership. And I certainly want to thank Corey, Mr. Wise, for helping us set that up. Mr. Wise, what are the dates of our next level meetings and regional meetings? And by the way, I, I am committed to attending those meetings as well. So Director Lung, again, I apologize, I should have been more specific and said principals instead of using the acronyms of our level meetings and, and again, not saying principals specifically.
Well, thank you, Dr. Tucker, because I, I mean, as I said, they are the building leader and, and, and in, I've hoped, you know, they have 90 to 95% confidence level to open the building. And I, I think that is my personal satisfaction, you know, to think that this is the time to go if the building principal and the teacher calm down. And also the second thing I want to mention is we have been pushing the opening day from August 7th to August 10th. And today you said that you want to move into August 12th. So I, I, I'm thinking maybe you should hold on to the August 12th day until we have time to discuss it, you know, further. Because the last we want is tomorrow you tell building August 12th and then later than you set a day.
And that's why we're coming back with all of the principals. We're going to come back and meet with them. And that's why I'm asking Mr. Wise to give us those dates. We're going to come back with all of our building principals and say, look. And I, and really this 12th was pushed back. We had a conversation with them. I said, look, I understand what your consternations are. Here we are on the 12th. I can certainly bring this to the board. Now I see that the board does have an, will be supportive. Again, I do appreciate having, you know, having the opportunity to just set the dates myself. But again, we, we don't operate that way. We want to make sure we operate as a team. So we'll come back with, have a full conversation with the principals in these next couple of days, asking them where you see, we at least, we're not coming back before the, before the 12th. Let's come up with the, with the date. Mr. Wise, are you on yet?
Yep, yep, I'm here. Typically, as we come back in July, we wait for that third week before we start our level meeting. So that'd be the week of the 20th through the 24th. We have principals still, you know, th- this is a different summer, but we have principals still bringing back their teams and working on that. But it's been typical in our process to really start back that third week of July. So our level meetings would next be, and I don't see it scheduled on our calendar, but I'd see it the week of the, next week would be 20th or the 27th.
Regional meetings, I think you have a regional meeting coming up soon.
Yep. So we have regional meetings the rest of this week. So it'll be working with each of our principals in our regional groups this week. They're on different days, but we have regional time. East Island branch as soon as tomorrow and each of the other ones, whether it be Wednesday or Thursday.
Yeah. And Director Lung, you, you probably already know this. Each DOS has a region and their principals, elementary, middle and high school will be in the regions. And we'll be able to raise this question and continue to discuss these concerns this week in, in the DOS's, EDOs's regional meetings. Thanks, Mr. Wise.
Yep. Director Chantre Shore. Looks your muted, muted Director Chantre Shore.
I'm sorry. Yes, I just want to be very clear. After five or six hours of conversation, what we're saying is that, that Dr. Tucker and company will make a decision about whether or not they decide to push the time back and whether or not they decide to recommend or require masks. So I guess I'm just saying that I guess for clarification, this is Dr. Tucker's decision with his cabinet and not a board decision.
That's the way the resolution is written, yes.
So
But this conversation is, we want to make this together. I wanted, see, you all represent the community, you have the, your pulse on the fingers of the community and really want to hear your thoughts tonight.
Okay.
And, and I think you covered, and I also want to just echo Director Holtzman wanted also to make it clear. It's not just about the masks. It's really about us, the consistency of being able to enforce whatever strategies we're recommending for protection. So I want to be careful that we don't get too narrow with that. I think, Dr. Tucker, from, from my point of view, if all the principals' questions can be answered and all the 100, 200 emails, questions from teachers can be answered, we're going to feel good about whenever you start. But I think that's the missing link for us right now is that they don't know the answers. We certainly don't know the answers. So I think that's what we're looking for. So I know you started the document today with all our building leaders.
Right.
That's a great, I think it's a great navigation tool to say, what, what is our readiness? Are we ready to come back based on answers to those questions that our building leaders gave? So Director Hanson, your electricity came back on, huh?
That was crazy. Yes. So just, I'm very unclear and maybe I missed it, but I'm not sure how we're leaving the parent survey and what exactly we're looking to accomplish from the parent survey and clarification on when exactly parents are going to have to make their final decision about whether they're electing to go with online or in-person learning for the school year.
Parent survey, Director Hanson goes out tomorrow. I'll ask Mr. Reynolds, to our survey guru, to talk a little bit more about, to address more of the specific questions you raised.
Good evening. The survey will go out as part of a, a package for communication. And it's specifically asking questions about e-learning versus in-person learning. If, if folks are at, responding that they're going to do e-learning, what are their needs? And if they respond to in-person learning, what are their needs as well? So that survey is going to go out tomorrow to give us an idea. And as always, as, as parents approach this new year, they'll have some flexibility that this survey is not the definitive answer on what their choice is. This is an idea for us to get a, a sense of what choices are being made so we can start looking at the logistical details around that remote learning option.
So I'm not sure that my concerns have completely been heard then. If I can't make a decision about what I am going to do for my own kids, I do not know how we can ask our community to do that. So I really need some information about what we are going to tell our parents so that they have the information to make a choice.
In the survey, we'll have a very deep description. I think, again, I don't want to put any words in your mouth, that we'll have a deep description of what e-learning is. And in fact, we, we go back to the, our framework, it lists the various types of learning options. And so we'll do a better job of designing, if you will, the survey instrument to give a very good definition, a very good description of in-person learning, five days a week versus our e-learning.
So I think, I think your concern has been heard, Director Hanson, that you are very skeptical that parents are able to really give a good response with the survey tomorrow. Dr. Tucker's reassuring that there will be more details in the survey, but I, I think you've made, made your point well known that we're going to, you're going to be somewhat skeptical whether or not there's accuracy or whether a parent can even make a choice if they don't have more detailed information. All right. Director Holtzman, and then I want us to move on.
Just because I brought up the resolution from March 26th entitled Resolution to Increase responsiveness and Decision Making Efficiency During State of Emergency. And I also just feel an obligation to say that resolution was made by the board and can be amended by the board or could be rescinded by the board. So just throwing that out there. And then if we are able to meet in person on the 26th, which, which I'm hopeful that we can do, I, I know that we may have board directors who have already planned to be out of town for that day. And I just want to make sure that we, we still have our policy in place, which I know we do, that would allow them to participate remotely. So those were my things.
Thanks for that clarification. All right. So directors, this was an agenda item that could either have action as far as motion, but I think we're at consensus of the things that we need to hear at that July 25th date. And that was the purpose of all this work that we've done is so that it's real clear to Dr. Tucker what he needs to bring to us to reassure the board that we're ready for when students come back to us through the doors. So I'm going to wrap it up with that and just say we look forward to that check-in on the 25th. We'll look forward to a, a decision regarding the start date, Dr. Tucker, and the, and knowing that you have the flexibility from the board to be able to make some adjustments. I just would say, I think we just need to get people into their buildings with their leaders. And just like all, it's been echoed throughout many directors, it's that operational planning that we feel like really needs to be done. And I don't think that's going to happen until we put teachers and principals in the building and really walk through those things, those scenarios. And I think that's going to, what's going to really make it real for us to see that we're ready is when that operational knowledge and understanding and like Director Lung, use the word calm. You know, when we can kind of calm everybody to the point where they feel confident that they're ready to receive kids. I think that's what we're after. So I think hopefully that's been clear. All right, we're going to move on to the next item. There, our last item on our agenda is the superintendent contract. And we are looking, or Dr. Tucker has approached us with amending his contract to actually mirror how we have really asked all our employee groups to share the burden of the financial crisis that we're in, to share the burden of helping us balance a budget, to share the burden to realize all of us have a responsibility to contribute to this issue. And, and Dr. Tucker has requested that he have a 3% salary reduction as well as the five furlough days would also be part of his amended contract. So I will entertain a motion to accept those two amendments and then we'll allow for discussion and then we'll vote. So is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept it.
Thank you, Director Lung, motion made.
Second.
And seconded by Director Chantre Shore. Any discussion or questions regarding that?
I
Director Lung?
I just want to, uh, thank you, Dr. Tucker, for his sacrifice. And being, being a superintendent is a tough job, especially during this unprecedented time. And Todd Tucker has been working really hard. He deserves every dollars that he earned, even that he's willing to make a sacrifice in light of the financial crisis and having the same treatment as the other staff and the other cabinet's member by taking the same level of a cut that he is doing. And it just shows, you know, what kind of a, you know, great leader, you know, he is to be with the people and do the same, you know, level as the other people. So do whatever the, so just don't say whatever, you know, people say, just, and also do the same thing as the other people, you know, do. And for that, I want to thank you.
And, and I would echo that, Dr. Tucker. Leading by example is who you are and truly grateful for you. Uh, for you um and 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 being able to uh deal with a session like we had tonight. Is is pretty difficult in itself. But I want to thank you also, just like Director Lung said, that you're you're setting an example for the system that we're all working on this together. It's not stuff that we enjoy doing, but it's stuff that we have to do for the sake of our kids, so thank you for that. Directors, any other reactions, comments, questions uh before we take a vote? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Uh, Chantre Shore.
I.
Graziano.
I.
Hanson.
I.
Holtzman.
I.
Lung.
I.
Meek.
I.
Ray, I, that motion passes unanimously. All right, directors, I will entertain a motion for an adjournment. Okay, moved by Chantre Shore, seconded by um Director Lung. Before we adjourn, just want to again, just reiterate what Director Meek brought up. Um, the reason we met remotely is simply because we're ready, we're waiting for our facilities to be ready for us. To allow public access. And so absolutely, I agree with Director Meek. Uh, we're gonna lead by example as well. If we're asking our people to come back in person, we sure should be doing that as a board. And so if uh our facilities are at a place where we can enter them and public is allowed to access them. Our next meeting will definitely be in person. All right, with that, any is all in favor of the motion in the second, say aye.
Aye.
All right, most or meeting adjourned.